Can you? Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. And we're going to start with the Pledge of Legions. Thank you so much for joining us this evening. And we're going to begin with the Superintendent's report.
Good evening, President Burke, members of the Board, community. It's great to see a full house this evening. Looking forward to celebrating some of our students. A few updates since the last time we met. We concluded all but two of our process and progress checks. If you remember, this is an opportunity for us to sit down in front of our staff. We met with Lakeside, Hawthorne, Renaissance, Eastridge, Brookview, and Sunny Heights. Gives us an opportunity to see how things are going, how we can support our teachers. U-Indy invited us to come and visit with their president and heads of all their departments. Laura Buckright, Ryan Russell, Bree Brown, and I met with them to identify ways that we can partner with them to support our students who are college-bound and also how we can support our teachers. It's been a very fast-moving 30 days of the new administration. We met a couple of weeks ago with our multilingual staff to better understand the challenges and fears that some of our students and families are facing due to immigration policies that are being enacted. We have a better understanding of how we can support them. Yesterday during our professional development day, Zach Zamara from Immigrant Connection met with several of our staff to provide a more in-depth understanding as we're learning more about what is happening and how we can best support our families. We'll continue to learn, we'll continue to monitor that. And Board, I'll keep you updated along the way. Board, I passed up in front of you a letter that all K-12 schools and post-secondary institutions received on Friday. It is infamously known as the Dear Colleague Letter. It's from the Department, Federal Department of Education Office of Civil Rights. And essentially what this letter does is it undoes the previous administration's priority of diversity, equity, and inclusion. And it states that if K-12 schools and post-secondary institutions do not comply with this undoing, we run the risk of losing federal funding. I want our Board and our community to know that we are monitoring this, we are watching this. We believe that diversity, equity, and inclusion are important. And, you know, we just are trying to make sense of this. We're working with our legal team as well as our other peer districts to really interpret. Interpretation is very important right now. And I will share with you that Perry Township did lose some of their federal funding yesterday. They were notified that one of their grants was eliminated due to this kind of new policy. So it got real yesterday, and we're going to continue to monitor that. So Board, again, I'll keep you updated as we go along. I want to thank all those that were involved in Self-Care Saturday. Our staff that participated had a really nice pampering last couple of weeks ago. Real quick, MCRC recognition. Congratulations to Mr. Taylor and the MCRC team for receiving the Community Education Award from the Indiana Youth Services Association. This happened in January where MCRC was recognized out at the State House. We had a great legislative forum. Thank you, Board and staff, who participated in the district science fair at Creston. Our students that are moving on, Kate, that's in April. So I'll let you know how they do there. Want to wish our wrestlers good luck at state this week, weekend. And I just want to continue to acknowledge and celebrate Black History Month. For me, it feels like it's more important now than it ever has been. So that's my report this evening.
Thank you so much, Dr. Hanson. And with that, we are going to move on to our spotlights with Lauren Hughes.
Sorry, I'll wait till they come up. Good evening, everyone. President Burke, Dr. Hanson, members of the Board, Warren Township colleagues and guests. For those of you who may not know me, my name is Lauren Hughes, and I'm the Assistant to the Athletic Director at Warren Central High School. I'm excited to stand here today, a little nervous, but excited, to recognize two of our amazing programs that we have that have made a strong impact on our community within a short timeframe. Our girls wrestling and our girls' flag football program. First, I'd like to recognize our girls' wrestling program. This season, girls' wrestling became extra special as this was the inaugural season of being officially sanctioned and recognized by the IHSA. And an official state tournament was held back in mid-January. Warren has been well-known around the city to, and state, to have a solid reputation when it comes to our girls' wrestling program of being consistent not only with numbers, but talent as well. Under the leadership of head coach Andre Taylor, our program has continued to strive for success by sending four state qualifiers to the 2025 IHSA state finals this season. Amina Ruzanaguko-Taylor, state qualifier at the 125 class. Rihanna Benson, fifth place at the 105 class. Shamaya Long, seventh place at the 140 class. And not present with us, Jasmine Hollands-Roeey, fourth place at the 190 weight class. Through majority of this group represented today, our seniors, the future is still bright as this program has a very good young group, not only in the high school, but also at the middle school level as well. Congratulations once again to our girls' wrestling state qualifiers.
Ladies, if you want to come up so we can shake your hands.
Okay. All right, and next we have our girls' flag football program. First, we're going to show a video. The Indianapolis Colts, for those of you who may not know, have been really, really awesome with us with our girls' flag football program since we started this, this year. They did a content piece for National Girls and Women in Sports Day at our high school a couple of weeks ago. And they chose us as their platform rather than highlighting somebody within their organization. So we thought it was really cool that they did that. So I'm going to play that first.
It's not just about getting them to see themselves, push themselves to be better, but you can see the confidence.
I've played a lot of different sports, but none of them have given me the sisterhood I would say flag football gave me.
It helped me be mentally strong because in my other sports, I kind of have a problem with that. So it helped with my mental side. And it helped me figure out some things physically that I can do that I didn't know my body could do.
I definitely stepped up into a new leadership role and like found that voice in me to be a leader.
When you see the confidence grow in a girl, or just in a human being, you can just see they make better decisions in life.
My brothers played football. And I, when I was in sixth grade, I signed up for the boys' football team. And my dad said I couldn't do it because he didn't want me to get hurt with boys. So when I came to high school and I heard that this was an opportunity, it got me really excited to do it.
Flag gave some of those girls an opportunity to find what they like and actually push themselves not to be scared to try something new.
We've been having slow internet problems. It's not you.
If you want to watch it, we did share it out on the weekly communications. And if you don't have access to that, it's on our social platforms. We shared it through Colts Community. It is on the Colts Community and the Colts page in addition to us being tagged, I believe, on it. So it's a good, a good video if you want to go back and watch it. So sorry about the technical problems on that. So, but back in the spring of 2024, I worked with the Indianapolis Colts to get the girls' flag football team started at Warren Central. It was a risk with establishing a new program, but we knew this was something our girls in our community needed. We held a call-out meeting right after spring break, and we had more than 100-plus girls interested. Towards the end of July, we had more than 70 tryouts for the team. Needless to say, Warren needed girls' flag football more than girls' flag football needed Warren. These young ladies, under the leadership of head coach Mackenzie Brown and former head coach Quentin Wilburn, have not only learned new skills in a sport that majority have never played before, but they have also learned to lean on one another and develop a strong sisterhood on and off the field. Thanks to the Indianapolis Colts, our partnership with them and with Girls' Flag has grown even stronger, and they've helped, and they have truly helped share our story and display the true pride of the East Side. The NFL and the Indianapolis Colts are committed to making girls' flag football a varsity sport in all 50 states. And currently, Indiana is sitting at 41 schools as of last week who are committed to playing with more than 70-plus that are interested in learning more information. Having these two programs, both Girls' Flag and Girls' Wrestling, added within our school has been a saving grace for many who may not have had an outlet to go to before. According to the Women's Sports Foundation, it has been founded that by age 14, many girls are dropping out of sports at the two times rate of boys. Why is this happening, you might be saying to yourself? Because surely this wasn't happening when we were growing up. Here are a few factors that the WSF have found to back up this statistic. The lack of access. Girls have 1.3 million fewer opportunities to play in high school than boys have. Safety and transportation issues. Social stigma. Girls in sports may experience bullying, social isolation, negative performance evaluations, and more. Decreased quality of experience, cost, and lack of positive role models. But luckily today, we are happy to say we have several organizations that are committed to help increase the number of girls participating in sports again by investing in these, these groups like girls' wrestling through the IHSGW and the NFL and the Indianapolis Colts for girls' flag football. Warren Central Athletics is excited to see the growth of where these teams will be in a few years. And who knows, maybe one day you'll see some of these girls competing in the Olympics. Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have Janesha Brown with our Student Council update.
Good evening, President Birch, Dr. Hanson, members of the Board. I would first like to start off this very long information dump with a very sincere apology for not being here at last month's meeting. I had mixed up my dates and unfortunately had assumed that our meeting was later in the month than it actually was. And it wasn't until that actual day that I met with my principal. And I was like, oh yeah, I'm getting ready for the board meeting tonight. And she said, that already passed. And I was like, well, that's unfortunate, okay. So I just had to wait until this one to basically share everything that's been going on. However, diving into a few subjects at hand, as there is much to talk about to make up for my absence. At the school, we have started the planning for prom, and we are looking to finalize those details by the end of this month to prepare to have those out by March so that everyone can be ready. We also hosted, I believe, our third pep rally in January to bring in the new semester. And I honestly would say that this one was one of the most active that we've had our student body be in. We received what I believe to be the best results of our pep rallies so far. So I think it's safe to say that we are for sure knowing of the standards that we need to make our pep rallies be met. Also, just to step back a little, we have started the planning stages of a new event that we are planning to bring to the high school under the hopes of being considered as Prom Expo, where we will basically have multiple vendors with the criteria such as dresses, tuxedos, nails, hair, makeup artists, the whole nine, and more, just to help with the planning of the student body's prom night to ensure that it is just as magical and memorable as we've all been hoping for. We are currently in the process of clarifying the vendors that will be present on this event hosted on March 12th from 12:00 PM to 2:00 PM. And we are looking forward to this being one of many successes in the countdown of prom. One of the many important goals that Student Council has set for ourselves at the high school is to make our community more involved and to bring each other closer together. And one of the best ways to start the growth of that garden is with the seedlings, otherwise known as our youth. So in an attempt to start bringing together the road to high school and graduation, we had a few of our Student Council members, as well as myself, visit the Sunny Heights Elementary School to meet with their Student Council. And while we were meeting with them, we did multiple fun activities pertaining to the qualities and skills needed to be a leader and to be successful in Student Council. Our goals with the children, who we hope to be seen as the future of Warren Central High School Student Council one day, is to aid them in the planning and execution of an event that they wish to see at their school. We're still in the beginning stages of this so far, but we are hoping to make this happen at the end of the school year for their peers and our legacy. And also, just to bridge off of that, we have made successful communication with the middle schools of our township to host a full-out community event. We are also still in the beginning stages of that plan, but we have received a few dates that the middle school Student Council meets. And we hope to touch base with them on one of their meeting days to begin the planning and detailing of this event, and that will hopefully bring together our township and community. These are just a few of the major things that we have in plan. And I cannot wait to return to share the outcome and feedback of our work on these events and plans in store. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Brown. That's a wonderful update. We truly appreciate it. Our next presenter is Jenny Manalas. Oh, hiding in the back of the room. I'm so sorry. I missed you.
There we go. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jenny Manalas, and I am the Mayor's Neighborhood Advocate for the Far East Side. And I will be sharing some updates with you guys about community, things that are happening. If you're unfamiliar with what my role is, I serve as a liaison between the Mayor's Office, different city and county agencies, and the general public. Some events we have coming up. INRC is having their Neighbor Power Event, which is an amazing event to have different workshops, different people tabling, different resources. You get to be part of discussions in terms of key neighborhood issues, some of the things you see, some of the things you would like to have more of, just a conversation about what neighborhood looks like. And there'll be plenty of different resource tables available as well. That is March 8th at 9:00 AM at Martin University. As well, Indy Parks is hiring. They are starting their summer hires. It's a little hard to think about summers when it was just snowing as I was driving here. So, but they are starting their summer hire programs already. They have bonus referrals and things like that. As well, they are already starting their summer camp scholarships. These are limited scholarships available for families based on financial needs. They do have different criterias and a percentage of fees that could be waived. But they have started getting a lot of interest in these and people signing up for these. So if you have kiddos or no kiddos that would want somewhere to go during the summer and be part of activities that parks and be part of activities that Parks offers, um, and you may need financial help, they have that available. So going from summer back to winter, um, I wanted to briefly touch on potholes. We are seeing it. There's probably gonna be more. You've probably dropped in a few already. Um, so just a quick reminder, if you're unfamiliar about how potholes are formed. Um, so when it rains or snows or anything like that, that water goes underneath the ground. Then it freezes because it's two degrees outside and that raises the concrete up a little bit. And then, once it's raised up, we go back to like a random 50-day in January or February. Then it thaws and that water is underneath. And then as cars drive on top of it, it is breaking down the road into that space where the ice was. That's now just water again and then bits of concrete is just chipping away and falling in. And the more this happens, the more water that was underneath and things like that, the bigger the pothole. And so as these temperatures fluctuate, you will probably see new ones develop. Um, and there are many ways that a pothole is fixed. There are six. Right now, what's being used is called a cold mix, um, due to the temperature. Um, and so that cold mix is more of a temporary solution. It's not meant to last. Um, just because the concrete that is used during the summer to redo the roads and things like that has to get to a certain degree to, um, really be more of a permanent solution. And so you can notice a pothole gets fixed and then in a couple of weeks, it's back up. Um, so all that to say, you will see these potholes. Please call the Mayor's Action Center and report them when you see them so that they can come out and DPW can come out and fix them and put those, um, temporary cold mix in. And as a reminder, if you're unfamiliar, if your vehicle does get damaged by a pothole, you can call the city, um, to get a reimbursement on that tire that may have gotten flat. OMWBD, which is our Office of Minority and Women Business, um, they are doing this workshop on March 3rd. It is on the other side at Eagle Branch Library. Um, but if you are or know a business owned by a minority, women, veteran and/or a disabled owner, they are having opportunities to teach people how to get certified, um, through that office. And that certification unlocks different opportunities and things like that. IMPD is having a blood drive, um, on April 18th from 12 to 6:00 PM. It will be at IMPD's East District, um, over on Shadland. Um, and this is in memory of Officer Breann Leaf that was tragically killed in the line of duty. Indigo just went through their Blue Line Community Meetings and Hearings, um, this past week or so. And so they're gathering all of the feedback they've, um, gotten as they move forward in that project that will be connecting the west side to the east side from the airport all the way to... I can't see what street that is, but all the way to the east side. As well, one more announcement for everyone. There is this, um, initiative called Vision Zero. If you are unfamiliar with Vision Zero, um, it is essentially trying to get zero deaths, deaths from automobiles, um, whether it's, uh, pedestrians getting struck by automobile, kids being killed getting off the school buses, things like that, just safety in general. And there are a couple options if you want to learn more and if you want to participate in pedestrian safety. If you go to INDI MPO, which is Indianapolis Metropolitan Planning Organization, they have developed a Vision Zero Toolkit that talks more about, um, the dangers of just safe, things relating to safety and things like that. For example, on it, they say that each year more than 4,000 people are needlessly killed on American streets and thousands more are seriously injured. So it gives you different toolkits, um, one just more information, um, and data and things like that, as well as planning and policy strategies and different resources. Our city county council, they adopted to have a Vision Zero Task Force. Um, and with that task force, they currently have a, um, survey that they are doing to collect information. And some of that survey includes question about what safety improvements would make it easier for you to walk, bike, use public transportation or drive a vehicle safely in Marion County. It also asks things like what specific locations in Marion County feel unsafe to you and why, and a host of other, um, questions on that survey as that task force gears up to, um, put into effect the things that they learn and strategies they come up with. If you would like, um, access to that survey and to that link, I will be back there for a while and have the QR code as well. You could email me at jenny.manalas@indy.gov. That's J E N N Y dot M E N E L A S at indy.gov. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Manalas. We appreciate your information always. And with that, we are going to move on to Board Comments. Howard Dorsey.
Jenny, pothole blitz? Man, I was just getting over about a year, couple of years ago to that kind of stuff and now they're back. But that's okay. Good presentation. Really appreciate you being here with us. Janesha, don't worry about having missed last month, okay? It's not a big deal, okay? You got, you're gonna, you, you, you set the stage, the standard for the kind of kids we like in, in, in our, in our school. And you don't have to worry about that. We know that you're probably more busy, um, before nine o'clock than most people do all day. So don't worry about it. You're doing, you're doing a great job. I just want to say that the district, uh, science fair I thought was really outstanding. Uh, you know, we've got the, the best, the best kids. We got the best kids. Uh, the quality of that, uh, of that, uh, that fair, uh, I was one of the judges. And one of the, and, and, and all of them were great. So it was really a great time. So I just wanted to say that and bring that up real quick here. Uh, Girls Wrestling, hey, we're setting the standard for all of the other schools to get together a team that's going to be able to compete, uh, with our girls. Uh, come on. Girl football, that's great. That's great. And I'm glad we're, we're leading, uh, we're leading the charge on that. I'm really, I'm feeling good about that. Girls Wrestling, come on. We got some tough girls there. And I think they're gonna do even better than the girls that we, that were, uh, 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 mentioned today. Uh, I'm looking forward to it. You know, I had a chance to go to, uh, right after the, I don't know if, yeah, I did mention it to the members of the board. Right after the, the legislative hearing, legislative forum, uh, I went by the, uh, the auditorium and, uh, I, I was amazed at what I saw there. And oh, by the way, we also had some wrestling, a wrestling invitational that day as well. And, uh, our guys performed very well. And we also had some basketball. I mean, it was a bunch of stuff going on over at the high school. And so that's just kinda typical. Uh, but I enjoyed that as well. So, uh, I want to just say, uh, it's really great to, 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 um, continue with this, uh, the rest of this semester. Uh, we're looking for some great things. Uh, we've already got it. We got a bunch of challenges coming up that are facing us. And so we just gotta meet those and I think we will. Uh, that's about all I've got.
Thank you, Howard. Julie?
I have one thing to say. As I was sitting and listening to you, you are amazing. And if you are representative of what we have at our high school, top notch. Very nice job. You are poised. I just think a lot of adults could not stand there and do what you do. So kudos to you. Very nice. I went to the State House yesterday for, along with Rachel and LaShawna, um, for, uh, the ISBA State House Day. And I went to NSBA's Advocacy and Equity Institute in, um, Washington DC. And I met with a couple of legislators there as well. I am in my robotics season now. I've been sick, so I haven't had the opportunity to go too much this year so far, but I'm looking forward to getting back into that. And our first competition is February 28th through March 2nd.
Oh, sorry. Thank you, Julie. Kevin?
Good evening, everyone. Uh, starting off the new year again and things are going, getting off to a great start. And on the, piggybacking on, uh, Howard's comment on the Girls Flag Football, if you didn't get the opportunity to see that video, it is definitely worth going to find and watch. It's excellent presentation. Uh, also I had an opportunity to, uh, be one of the judges at the science fair and Howard stole my show on that one also, but they did, the kids, they, they're the, the things they're coming up with and the things they're doing are really good. It's really impressive to see, uh, the young minds at work in the projects they're building. So it's, it's a really good, uh, uh, want to put on your schedule for next year for the science fairs and things. And also there was the legislative forum we held. It was, uh, as always, they're always very informative and we're already thinking next year how we can manage to get all of it in because there's so much and it might have to be a two-parter or something to that effect because between the information that's available, the time, the new environment, it's a lot of things that's, that's, that's transpiring now. And also, uh, one more heads up along the flag football tip. The, uh, Youth League will be starting their flag football and information will be coming out with the, with the elementary schools to get all that involved so we can have the things running from the ground up before we take care of our babies to the high school. And I believe that's all I have for this report.
Thank you so much, Kevin. LaShawna?
Good evening, everyone. You all need to wake up. It's not bedtime yet. Long day. Um, Tene, you always do such a magnificent, um, presentation. But this report highlighted peer mentoring. And per statistics and data, that peer mentoring is one of the driven forces to overcome the school to prison pipeline. And our youth respond better when they have positive peers to, uh, be able to connect with. So I appreciate you as the president and the student council looking at that and being able to afford that opportunity to our elementary students. So great job. Prom Expo, um, you just had my heart over here just jumping, jumping, jumping. Because a lot of times we may have, you know, as your peers may want to come to prom, but cannot afford it. Our parents may not even know how to plan that. So giving them an opportunity to be able to see what's available and what's affordable and how they can turn a magical event with little finances is amazing. So thank you all for tapping into that demographics to be able to, uh, reach a broader audience for prom. So great job. We will be, um, as some of you may know, um, MCRC, we have a hoop house. And that is a tunnel garden. So in that, we would probably be able to serve thousands of pounds worth of free fresh produce year round. And the goal will also be to, um, connect with some of our schools that have gardens, that have outside gardens to bring some of their, um, seedlings and produce over to be able to grow year round. So, um, really, really excited. I've recruited, um, Kevin's wife. She's also a grower. So she is very, um, excited to be able to assist. Thank you, Dr. Hanson, Matt, for everyone who helped, um, make that, um, dream come true. And I attended several events. Science Fair, as always, is always a joy to see, um, what they're doing. Mental health to the team that helped bring together the mental health. I saw teachers walking in with excitement and walking out relaxed. And that's what we wanted. Our, um, I won't steal the joy because next month we will highlight our cosmetology class. But if you have not been over to the Walker Career Center and got treated by those ladies, the professionalism is off the charts. I was in awe. So please go patronize them. They are waiting for customers. Um, so just flood, flood, flood through. Um, and I think I will end on that good note and I'll turn it back over to you, Madam President.
Thank you so much, LaShawna. Teri?
Good evening, everyone. Um, last month, I forgot to mention, Raymond Park had their Science Olympiad Invitational and I was honored to be there and see all of the schools that were participating in that and hand out awards. Um, also went to the science fair. It was really interesting. Um, great stories on tooth decay and water filtration and how, um, farmland can be stretched. I got to judge with Allison, so that was fun. Um, also took part in the legislative forum. As always, I appreciate you being here and always being the voice. And echoing LaShawna, the peer mentoring piece is amazing. What we can offer our young, our younger seedlings, um, even, um, our sprouts that are in the middle school, um, connecting with them and just being positive role models will help them grow. So thank you for all you do. And that's all I have.
Thank you so much, Teri. Gloria?
Can you hear me?
We can, yes.
Okay. Hello, everyone. I'm so sorry I wasn't able to be there in person. Uh, I know Julie was like, she was, just came from Washington DC and I am in Washington DC right now. So, um, everybody, um, you know, I, I'm excited that I was still able to attend the meeting. I have a few things that I would like to say. You know, I can't give enough ditto to our student representative. Everybody has really praised you and I just want to get mine in too. Uh, we have an awesome student representative. You're very informative. And I just want you to keep up the good work. You do a great job. Secondly, I am so proud of all of our students here in Warren. And I want to encourage more students to participate in after school activities if they can, sports and academic, um, activities. Because in addition to what you do in school, it always helps to have these extracurricular activities to try to keep you really engaged in school. So I want to encourage more and more students to participate and hopefully parents. If you're having difficulty with transportation or finance, notify someone and let someone know because, you know, I always say, you have not if you ask not. So it might be someone that may be able to help you. I want to encourage all of our seniors to focus and get, keep your grades up because we want all of you to graduate. I just want to have a strong finish. So get busy. This is the, we, we have a few months left. And I want to be so proud at that graduation to see all of our seniors' graduation. And then last of all, it's cold outside. And I was so heartbroken when I heard about the two children that froze because they were homeless. I work with the homeless population. And I am saying to all of our parents out there, if you are homeless or, you know, there and don't have heat, you know, please contact, we have Morehead Community Center. You don't know what to do, contact someone there. James Taylor is the person in charge there. Contact him. Go to our Morehead Community Center and ask for help. And there will be somebody there that can assist you and direct you on what you can do. We're here to help. So please, please take advantage of these opportunities and have the rest of a great year. We're here to help. So please, please, take advantage of these opportunities and have the rest of a great year. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Gloria. For myself, I want to discuss really quickly the girls' flag football. For those of you who watched the Super Bowl, one of the few highlights of the show, it being that the game was such a blowout, was the NFL commercial about flag football and getting it certified in every state. And all I could think of was, hey, we're doing that. We're working towards that. And it's really great. And like Kevin said, if you can watch that full video, you should. It's quite well done. As Julie mentioned, I went to ISBA State House Day. We've hit almost the halfway point of the session, so we really get to see what is sticking to the wall and what, where we need to put in some work for the second half. And Raymond Park Science Olympiad competed in regionals this past weekend at Manchester University, where we took first place. We're very proud. And with that, we are going to move on to board correspondence. Mr. Humphries?
We do not have any today, Madam President.
Thank you so much. Green cards?
And no green cards.
Okay, with that, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. This month, the consent agenda consists of the approval of minutes, financial report payroll claims, claims registered, and year-to-date summary of fund balances, supplemental personnel reports, field trip requests, permission to accept gifts and grants, change orders, contracts, and the use of school property. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Julie made a motion. Do I have a second?
Ah, LaShawna Triplett, second.
And LaShawna Triplett seconded the motion. As we have a member attending virtually, we'll be taking an oral vote. Mr. Humphrey?
We'll start with you, Ms. Williams. Ms. Gloria? Okay, we'll go.
Yes.
Okay, that's a yes for Ms. Gloria. Mr. Howard? Julie?
Yes.
Teri?
Yes.
Ms. LaShawna?
Yes.
That would be a yes for myself, and Madam President?
Yes.
And that would be a unanimous vote.
Excellent. The motion carries unanimously. Next, we will move on to the human resources report. Can I have a motion?
I will make the motion.
Teri made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
And Julie seconded it. Mr. Humphrey, if you can call the roll.
Once again, Ms. Gloria?
Yes.
Mr. Howard? Ms. Julie?
Yes.
And Ms. Teri?
Yes.
And Ms. LaShawna?
Yes.
Myself, I will abstain. Madam President?
Yes.
And that is?
And that also passes. Excellent. And with that, we're going to go to Dr. Hanson for some introductions.
Thank you, Board. It is my pleasure, after your approval of tonight's HR report, to introduce a familiar face in Carrie Taylor. Carrie could not be here this evening, but you did approve her new title as interim director for, on the Porter side. So we want to congratulate her and thank her for her good work. She's been doing some of that work since we last met. But tonight, we give her that official title. So, good job, Carrie. That is evident by our strong tradition of identifying and developing our own leaders. And sometimes, we also want to seek individuals who bring a fresh perspective and can elevate our district and community. We are excited that we have found that leader in Dr. Michael Sullivan. If Dr. Sullivan could come forward, please. Dr. Michael Sullivan was approved tonight as our new assistant superintendent for secondary. And while he's not perfect, because he went to Pike High School. He looks good in black and gold, though. We are excited to have him as our next leader in that position. He is currently an assistant superintendent in Avon Schools, and has previously held district leadership roles in Dayton Public Schools and Fort Wayne. With a deep commitment to student success, he brings an extensive experience in instructional leadership, school improvement, and strategic planning. I want to thank our talented secondary team who were a part of the process in selecting Dr. Sullivan. And we are excited to welcome him to the Warren family. And I'll let him tell you about the opportunity to get closer to his own family. Dr. Michael Sullivan. You want to come on over here?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity. Very grateful, excited about getting started. Was talking about my experience of having been in Dayton Public Schools, Avon High, or Avon Community Schools in Fort Wayne. It is going to be a great opportunity for me to get closer to my grandson, who will start at the preschool school in the fall. So that was a great opportunity for me in being able to make my way to Warren. A lot of great things that I know that are going on here, and a lot of people here that I already know. And again, I'm very excited about the opportunity.
And now, we're going to move on to legislative update with Julie.
Okay, let me see if I can find this here. Okay, this is going to be a little bit longer report. Because there's a lot going on out there. And I want to make sure the board, as well as those that are here and those that are listening, have a good understanding of what's going on. This first slide, I don't normally talk about federal stuff, but there's a lot going on there. I don't know if you've heard, most of this, most of you in this room have probably, probably heard that President Trump would like to close the Department of Education. That won't be quite as easy as just saying it's gone. But we've seen some of the moves that have been going on, and Dr. Hanson talked about Perry already losing a grant. But we're concerned about our funding. We're concerned about our title money. So I just want you to know what we have in title money. Title one, we have $3,780, or $780,000 that we get for title one, which includes like our elementary counselors, our reading coaches, instructional coaches, all at the elementary level, intermediate reading, intervention, interventionists. And it also includes things like elementary day tutoring, elementary summer school, McKinney-Vento support, instructional software and curriculum resources, that sort of stuff. Title two is elementary and intermediate middle school coaches professional development. Teacher evaluation software. Content-specific instructional specialists. This is all mostly professional development items. Title four is instructional software learning management system, McKinney-Vento items. And then our IDEA, which is also a big chunk, is supplies and materials, employee salaries and benefits, non-public school proportionate share, which is in all of those items. So for a grand total, our funding is $7,905,624. That's approximately 5% of our funding. And, let's see. We also get some non-DOE federal funds, E-Rate funding, which is $750,000. That's our district internet, internet security firewall, network components such as our routers, switches, access points, fiber lines. And then DOJ COPS grant. It's a three-year grant for $420,000, which comes out to about $140,000 per year, for a grand total of $890,000. So that's a chunk of change that we're looking at there. When I was in DC, we asked Congressman Carson's office, you know, what do you want us to do? I was with some school board members from Lawrence Township, and one from Washington Township also came. And so, they came with me to my meeting with him. And they said, keep everybody calm, because there's a lot going on out there, and it's scary. I'm going to say, we stay calm, but we need to be aware. And we need to contact our legislators, and we need to tell them we need this money. Because it's a chunk of change, and it's our, it's our IDEA, our special needs and such. So we, we really need this. So I'm going to move on now to Indiana. Partisan school board bills are back, and there's two of them. Senate Bill 287 and House Bill 1230. Senate Bill 287 passed the Senate, and now we'll go to the House. We're still not sure what's going on with House Bill 1230. It's being heard on third reading tomorrow. So we will wait and see. The worst of the two bills is 287. We really want it to go away. And if you'd like to talk to me more about it afterwards, if you have questions about it, it's just, school boards should not be partisan. It should be about what is in the best interest of children, and this is a passion to me. When I came on this board, I got a nice little note from the lady that was retiring. And she said in that, always think about what is in the best interest of the children when you are making decisions. And I have tried to do that, and I've tried to keep politics out of it because that has nothing, D and Rs do nothing to help our kids. It's what is in the best interest of them, and, and you just really need to keep an eye on that. Some good news. 1136 and 1501 are dead, at least for the moment. Even though they're dead, they may prop, come back in another bill if they decide to amend something. I don't think so, though, but I'm keeping my fingers crossed. Senate Bill 146, teacher compensation, passed out of the Senate and has been referred to the House. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a second. Senate Bill 482 on absenteeism passed out of the Senate and is referred to the House as well. Going back to teacher bill, the Senate Bill 146, teacher compensation. That bill wants to start, I just want you to know where we're at now in comparison to these bills. So, that bill, we're currently required by law to have $40,000 as a starting pay for our teachers. That bill would like to move it up to $45,000. Warren Township is at $50,500 for our bachelors and $51,500 for our masters. Some of our recent teacher compensation increases, the smallest was 2021, $1,350. And then 2122, we tackled compression and added $2,200 on it. And as you can see, we were in the 2,000 range or 3,000 range since then. Thank you, Brian. I borrowed one of your slides. Allison, I'm borrowing a couple of yours now. On the bill on absenteeism, I just want you to know where we're at. We are better off than a lot of schools, but we've been working on it longer under Allison's lead. She's kind of taken that one on. And we use raw we, which helps quite a bit. But you can see this bottom line right here. I don't know if my cursor's on there or not. Yep, right there. That was the first year we did it, and we were down in the '88, '89, '91, kind of bobbling around. The next year, we did better, and we moved up. And then, this is this year, this kind of orangish color right here. The reason we're continuing to get better is we think, well, we're moving up. But our chronic absences are a hindering. So, this year, she's been working on that. And as you can see, we want to, the 10% is where kids are considered chronically absent. So, this blue, light blue line here was our, oh, this, wait. This green line was our first year, and that's way up at the top. That's, we have a lot of absences there. And you go to this kind of a pinkish color here, we're getting better the next year. But now, working on the chronic absentees, we're getting better. We're getting close. So, we're going to keep working. We're not going to hit 10% this year, but we're going to keep going, and next year, maybe we will. I averaged out, if we go back to this slide, I took, I left off the 99.32 because July was only a one week. But if you just take these numbers here and you average them, and I know it's not exact because it's, there's different numbers of days in a month. But we're about 93.8% when you do that. So, we are working our way up. And that, when you talk to other school districts and you say what that is, they're amazed. They're like, how'd you do that? How'd you do that? So, we are working our way up, and we are doing a great job at that. Not so good news. Senate Bill, as I mentioned earlier, 287 is moving over to the House. And some funding concerns. Senate Bill one, property tax, it passed out of the Senate and has been referred to the House. That one, when it was initially, when it initially came out, was devastating, to say the least. We were going to lose about $22 million approximately over three years out of our operating fund. And that's scary. And there's some other districts that were losing $81 million, $77 million, a lot, okay? Now, we are, they've been amending this, and it's less. But Senator Braun has said that he will veto it because, just recently, because it's not what he initially requested. Senate Bill 518 passed out of the Senate and has been referred to House Bill, to the House. That happened just today. House Bill 1001 is the budget bill. The bad news is, I think it was the last biennium, the curricular materials, we switched over to that, which is good news. I mean, the state is paying for that. Our families do not have to pay for that. But it was set up with a line item for that. Because you don't want it to get mixed in with everything else, because then it kind of gets lost in there and, and it gets added in with everything else. And it was a line item just to look at curricular material, that schools would be reimbursed out of that money. In this House bill, they've moved it over into the education fund, which means they won't really think about curricular material when they're building this budget anymore. And it's going to get mixed in. It's just going to kind of be absorbed and just be part of what we get. The complexity index and funding is down 6.8% in fiscal year '26 and 9, .9% in fiscal year '27. But they say we're going to increase by 2%, but the lion's share of that will go to charters and vouchers. It won't go to K-12 public schools. Good news, though, SPED increases to 3.5 in fiscal year '26 and 3.6 in fiscal year '27. CTE increases to 8.7 and 8.1. ELL will increase to 8.6 and 7.5. I found it kind of interesting yesterday at the State House Day, I don't know if you guys caught it or not. Basler said that he didn't, for the special ed and the CTE and ELL, they understood what they needed, what was needed, and why those increases were needed. For the complexity index, he said, well, I don't really understand what is needed for this. Why do you need this extra money for these kids? It was basically, he doesn't understand the needs of our children. So I think we need to get together and write down exactly how these, how this, how this is used and what we use it for, and give that to him so that he knows. Maybe if he gets that, he'll say, oh, okay, and then we'll see. Senate Bill is one, 443. Senate Bills 1, 443, and 518. This would be our estimated net revenue loss. Now remember, these bills are a work in progress right now. None of them are set in law yet, or hopefully they won't be. But they're kind of playing around a little bit. Remember when I said Senate Bill initially was going to be like a 22 million loss? Now in 2026, it's going to be 338,410 that we will lose. '27 be almost 600,000 and '28 will be 760,000. Senate Bill 443, I put it on here because we do lose money, but it's very negligible. All school districts will lose a total of 2.4%. So that'll be divided up among all of the school districts. But that's just going to be a small amount, it's very negligible. Senate Bill 518 for the operation fund and the operation referendum fund. Now, these are very much estimates. They are a work in progress. They keep changing. This is like a living document. So please use these as estimates and guestimates. We're still trying to figure out what it's going to cost us, but we wanted to give you an idea. The first year out of our operational fund, we will lose 1,569,527. We really haven't figured out the other year. So I just kind of put that across the board, okay? And in the referendum fund, be 1,45,950. And I did the same there. So in 2026, we will lose just under $3 million in our operational fund. And '27 be 3.2 and 3.3 and '28. Our, when I get to our operation, I'll show you what that kind of does to us a little bit. This is our education fund. Our budget is $90 million in there. Wages and benefits, what we pay out to our staff, our teachers, our instructional assistants, principals, secretaries, and other instructional staff, 83,400, which leaves for everything else out of the educational fund, 6,600. But $2 million of that is for substitute teachers, okay? So 92% of our education fund budget is going to wages and benefits. We're people person. We have teachers, we have instructional assistants, we have front office staff, we have principals. I mean, we're, we're a people business. And then if, so if you, that's 92.6% of our educational fund. If you add those substitute teachers in, which are also people, that takes us up to 94.9%. And then if we look at our operations fund, the budget's 38 million, but Matt is an amazing person. And we're looking at maybe coming in at 36 million instead. 19.9 million of that is wages and benefits. And then the rest of that goes to technology, maintenance, transportation. That's a, maintenance is a big one, 9.5. Superintendent and business office, PC and work comp, that's our insurance. And then other. So our budget for the two, if you add them together, and I'm going with the 36 since that's where we're going to pretty much come out, budget's 126 million. The education fund is 83.4 million. And operations fund, 19.9, with total wages and benefits being 103.3 million. That's 81% of our education and operation fund. So we give our money to our teachers. That's what the, or to our staff. That's what the legislature would like to see. I do want to go and talk again real quick about, let me think which bill it was. Well, anyway, the teacher, oh, the teacher compensation bill. They wanted 45,000. We were at 50,000, I told you that. But they also want 60, at least, right now, it's 62% required by law that we pay our teachers, okay? So out of all the money that we get, 62% of it needs to be teacher specific, which is, includes principals and teachers and such. It would not include our instructional assistants and things like that. We currently are at 68%. That bill will move it up to 65%. So we are definitely working hard on paying our teachers. So I want to make sure everybody's aware of that as well. This is our operating referendum fund. I want to make sure everybody understands what that is. We want to thank our community here because without this, without them saying yes to the referendum, we wouldn't have these items or we'd be struggling to have these items. We said we wanted the money to go to school and safety and security, staff retention, recruitment, pre-K through 12, transportation, student staff technology, student learning, K-12, et cetera. And this 2025 estimate is what we expect to spend on those items, totaling 13 million, which is the budget for that. Year-to-date expenditures, now this is as of December of '24. And you can see, the things we are paying for are things that are, we said we would, okay? That's the important thing about this slide. You don't see any extra add-on lines where we are paying other stuff with this. So school safety, 1,650,000. 871, 945 is what we've paid so far. Our anticipated expenditures this year is 12 to 12 and a half million. And the other thing here is this operating referendum has a lot of wages and benefits in it as well. Our safety officers, our SROs and SSOs are paid out of our referendum. We have our family engagement liaisons that are paid out of the referendum as well as some of the hourly pay that our instructional assistants and support staff get, come out of that as well. It's a small portion, but it's a part of their salary. Transportation, that has some wages and benefits. And student learning also has some wages and benefits included in it. So I think we're close. Yep, that's it. I hope this helps explain things a little bit. There's a lot of questions going on out there as to whether school districts, particularly public, traditional public school districts, are using their money wisely and such. They're really pushing charters and vouchers. And the money that we are getting is being siphoned off a bit by the vouchers and the charter schools. So if I had a table up here, I was going to bring some little math manipulatives and do it for you. If we have 90 kids here and we had five kids here and five kids here, these 90 kids would represent the kids going to traditional public schools. This five here would represent the vouchers and this five here would represent the charter schools, okay? It's around that. It might be six for vouchers and four for charters or whatever. But it's pretty close, okay? The money we get is one pot of money. Right now, voucher kids, if their parents make 220,000 to 230,000 a year for a family of four, they can get a voucher. And then there is about 5% of the people left over who are not getting vouchers. Those are making over 220,000 or 230,000. They have the opportunity of going universal, they will get that. But that doesn't mean that we're going to get more money necessarily for them. These kids are already going to school. Their parents have already chosen public or private schools for them. Their parents can well afford it and they're paying it now. So when that money goes over there, it's a pot of money. And what was here goes this way. There's no extra here. It's like you have a bucket of water and some of it goes here and some goes here. So we are looking at tough times, especially with Senate Bill 1 and 518. So we really need to think about that and we need to work hard with these other school districts and get together and talk on what we can do and get parents involved because I think that's what it's going to take. I think it's going to take getting our parents to say, no, no, no. So if anybody out there is interested in helping me with that, I'm going to be contacting some of the school board members from Lawrence Township. They're very interested in that. And the one that was there at Washington Township will get with them. And I know there's other board members that are concerned about this. But we're going to start working on this for the second half because we need to make sure some of these bills that are going through don't make it, so. Any questions for me?
Julie, I just love how you're advocating for us. And I know that LaShawna and Rachel have gone as well. But it's very important for the advocacy to really let them know how we feel and what is in the best interest of children.
Well, you know, especially with the vouchers and such, these kids, they were initially made for kids that were, social economic status was low and they weren't, would not be able to go to a private school because they couldn't afford it. They still can't because they can get the voucher, but the cost is still too high. It only subtracts so much off and they still have to come up with the other 10,000 or whatever amount is left over. And then the other thing is, they don't necessarily get to go there even though they want to. It's school choice is not school choice for the kids necessarily or the parents. It's school choice, it's more like student choice where the voucher, the private schools get to pick what kids they want. And they can say no and, and they can send kids out after ADM count day and they come back here. We are, like Rachel said a couple of months ago, I think, we are that soft spot. It was a great example. We are that soft landing spot for kids. We take all kids and we love them and we wrap around them and we help them. So, and we will continue doing that no matter what we get. But it would be nice if we got the funding to do that in the way that the kids deserve, so.
Thank you so much, Julie.
I promise it won't be this long next month. I'll try.
She says that we're still going to be in session next month, so I wouldn't listen. Next, we're going to have Mr. Russell with the, with a presentation on the new high school diploma.
Good evening, President Burke, Dr. Hanson, members of the board. Tonight, I want to give an update on Indiana's new high school diploma. This was passed by the state or approved by the State Board of Education in December. Although as a board like ours, like yourselves, who certainly stay up to date with not only policy but legislation, I know this isn't the first time you're hearing about this diploma. But tonight, I want to give you a, what I would refer to as a general update in terms of what this new diploma is, what it represents and the opportunities for all students in Indiana. Then talk about some very specific initial steps that we've taken here in Warren Township and how it aligns to our strategic plan that's in place as we speak. It aligns to all of our strategic area, focus areas, our priorities and board goals. It's not just about academic excellence and student achievement. It's really about every single component and that'll make more sense as we work our way through. So the first few slides are really content directly from the IDOE. And I think it's important for everyone to at least have a general understanding of the rationale behind the change. When Julie was talking earlier about attendance, I'm going to jump right there. It's actually the last bullet point on here. But I know in some initial presentations, I was shocked to learn, now this isn't Warren data, this is State of Indiana data, that over one-third of seniors in high school are chronically absent in the state of Indiana. So over 33% of seniors in the state of Indiana are chronically absent. And they really link that to apathy and relevancy of high school. But that serves as one of the rationales. But if I go back in order now, fewer Indiana students are entering higher education. We've, we've seen declining rates in college entrance for our graduating seniors in Indiana since 2016. And even fewer of them are actually graduating college once they get there. So the graphic you see there represents who's going to college straight from high school. And unfortunately, those numbers, percent of students who are actually successful in college or a four-year university is even lower than that. Ultimately, the foundation of the work that we're doing in Warren Township, we talked about our journey of our graduate skills. And the second bullet really hits on that. Students are graduating without the, without the skills they need for rewarding career opportunities. Then specifically on the enlistment front, students, we've also learned, I think a shocking rate, that over 60% of the students who want to enlist find out that they are disqualified after it's too late. That may be specific academic qualifications. That may be what the military or service branches refer to as character disqualifications. But ultimately, our students are getting too late into their K-12 career without determining exactly what they want to do the day after graduation. And we've utilized that phrase a lot. But ultimately, these were some of those rationales that the state has given. Another way to look at this, I really put it in three buckets. So why, why these diploma requirements are changing or have changed now? It's about making the high school diploma more flexible and relevant for students, employers, and communities. As a community, we want students prepared to be successful in the community. Employers require, rely on us to help prepare students to be successful in the employment. High-quality work-based learning. We have talked a significant amount of just how rewarding those work-based learning opportunities are for students. And we certainly, in the state of Indiana, obviously here in Warren Township, want to make sure we increase those opportunities. And then of note, lately, we've had a lot of conversations about credentials of value. Increasing access and the number of students completing high-value post-secondary credentials before they graduate high school. It opens up the doors for students when they're able to get a credential of value before they enter, or before they exit high school. So ultimately, as the state was looking at workforce development, the quality of our graduating students in the state of Indiana, they wanted to reimagine what that high school experience could look like for students. And they certainly not only proposed, but passed some changes. So this is really nitty-gritty when it gets into the detail. And a few things that I would want to start off by clarifying. The new Indiana diploma was approved for the class of 2029, which is our current eighth graders who will be freshmen next year. So when you look at this slide or these next two slides, these, the future Indiana diploma is not the graduation requirements that we're talking about the class of 2025, or 26, or 27, or 28. Anyone in high school now does not, their pathway to earning a diploma falls under the current section. Anyone in high school now does not, their pathway to earning a diploma falls under the current section. It doesn't fall under the future section. So we're really talking about what those opportunities look like for our current students in eighth grade moving forward. So that being said, I'm not going to read this verbatim, but I do just want to point out a few significant differences that I know you may be well aware of already. You can see in terms of number of credits, ultimately, and the next slide will show this, but the baseline number of credits for high school graduation with this new Indiana diploma is now forty-two credits instead of forty credits. That's made up and this is really by department. And I will say, I think it's important to know that at the time of approval, and we're just a few short months after that time of approval, this is really all the information schools have to start to think about. There are a lot of questions yet still to be answered by the DOE, which we understand that's going to take some time. So if you ask a very specific question on what classifies as a STEM-focused credit, we don't necessarily have all those answers yet because I can name a, a lot of different scenarios in which we may think that applies, but we're still waiting on direct guidance from the DOE for. So anyway, English, still same, same amount of credits. That being said, right now, the only required English class that is traditional in nature would be English nine. As you know, we have English nine, English ten, English eleven, English twelve. English nine is still required. But the rest of those credits, with the exception, one has to be a communications-focused course, can look a lot of different ways. Not suggesting at this point that we're not going to have students in English ten, English eleven, English twelve. But depending on what that student's graduation plan may look like, it may be an English class geared more towards a specific career path. It may be an English class that's geared more towards an enrollment path, which we'll thresh out those details. I know math's a big one. I know even a year ago, as this diploma conversation was going up, I know, I think we were, while we were writing down the Nashville, President Burke, and we were talking about the math debate, whether Algebra II is going to be a required component or not. Well, the approved new Indiana diploma, Algebra II, is not a requirement for graduation. This does not mean we're not offering Algebra II. It just simply means that it's not a required component for math. You will see in addition, personal finance is a required course now. And we, that's music to our ears because we heard that through our strategic planning process and especially with the conversations with our students. Our students desire relevant personal finance classes, especially when they're in their later years of high school. A lot of them had referenced how they got some introductory personal finance early in their freshman year and it would be more applicable to them when they were older, after they had jobs, after they had a car or after they were paying certain things, trying to figure out what college or post-high school life looked like. So that, that certainly is a required course now. For additional math credits, again, we have a laundry list of math courses that students can take. But two Algebra I credits are the baseline piece that you're probably familiar with. Science, technology and engineering, Biology I is still a required course. You'll see an addition of a computer science course. I'm going to reverse just a second. Last, or actually in January, it's February, right? In January, you approved a computer science and a personal finance course. They add to the course additions. That was in preparation for this, just to draw those connections together. But Biology is still required. And again, that one example I gave to start, those two STEM-focused credits. I know having a lot of conversation with Dr. Rogers, we have a lot of questions about what a STEM-focused credit could be. Is it anything CTE-related? Could that be a STEM-focused credit? Is anything in math a STEM-focused credit? Again, I say that just to allude to while the bones of the plan are here and approved by the State Board of Education, there's a lot of details to work out. Excuse me. Social studies. Here, there, there's a couple of specific ones on here. And the one that sticks out to most people in the social studies realm is economics is no longer a required course to graduate in the state of Indiana. Again, a lot of people connect that personal finance with economics. And on a philosophy basis, we could debate what was the absolute best path forward. But the final diploma rule by the State Board of Education still requires or does not require economics. It also considers a world perspective credit. You're required to have two world perspectives, two world perspective credits. And that falls within the social studies department on this plan. And inclusive within that is any advanced world language course. So advanced Spanish, meaning like a Spanish III or a Spanish IV would satisfy that requirement. We, we're starting to get more information about that. Another one that stands out greatly is if with PE, under the current graduation diploma requirements, you need two credits in physical education and one in health. Now for physical education and health, you need one credit in physical education and one in health. So it eliminated a PE credit. Moving on more to the electives, directive electives. Again, those are things very specific for students, which now the comparison here is from a directive elective to the old term to now a personalized elective. The, the goal in that name change, just in general, is to make sure all the courses that a student is taking is aligned to ultimately what they want to do the day after graduation. Or it connects or gives them some type of value to what they see in their future selves. Again, another change, college and career-focused courses, commonly referred to as PCC or Preparing for College and Careers, is now a required graduation course. We already teach that course in high school. We actually call it freshman seminar and embed the preparing for college and career content within that course. So as you can see, again, there's just a lot of, lot of nitty-gritty details within this that provide, I'm going to say some opportunities for us in how we provide a personalized path for our students and what they want to be, how we want to help them be successful as they move forward. The other addition, and one that I think is both exciting and scary, is the addition of what they call readiness seals. So readiness seals aren't required to graduate in the state of Indiana. But they're, they're viewed almost as a credential or a stamp or an honors or a way to enhance your diploma in the state of Indiana. So you can see there's three distinctive pathways to steel, or to seals. And I hesitate to use the word pathways because it's overused in a lot of contexts, especially talking about graduation. But really at the heart of this, it gets into a student and what their unique, their new, unique opportunity or path is in high school for what they want to do after graduation. So it's broken down into enrollment for those students who are looking to go the college route, employment for those students who may be looking to go directly to the employment path, or enlistment and service seal for those students who want to go directly into one of the service branches in the military. So ultimately, what this is, is you can get an honors seal, which is an addition. You get your diploma with a honors seal or you get your diploma with an honors plus seal if you meet the criteria that's listed on here. And again, there, there's a whole lot on this slide to unpack. But just specifically in terms of the context of what that means. So in enrollment, so someone who wants to be college-bound, obviously, there's a lot of flexibility when you just look at this chart because it just says, yes, the only English course you absolutely have to take is English nine, or two credits of English nine, something that's communication-focused and then five additional credits. But then when you look more specifically at the readiness seals, it starts to outline some more specific coursework that you're going to have to engage with in the criteria to be able to accomplish that to get there. So I'm just going to use a couple of these as an example. So for an honors seal, at least four credits in world language, six social studies credits. Again, the required math was only six credits, but you would have to have at least math, eight math credits, a C or average in all your court, or a C or higher in all the courses and a cumulative GPA of a B average, which is traditionally a three-point-O. And then you would have to complete one of the following. At least four credits in AP, six college credits while you're in high school or score a twelve-fifty on the SAT or a twenty-six on the ACT. So if you're able to obviously earn your baseline diploma and satisfy all of those requirements, you would get an honors enrollment seal on your diploma. An honors plus seal is, I don't want to say self-explanatory, but it's just a level up from honors plus. With that, you have to do everything within the honors seal and earn a credential of value. So that's an associate's degree, a technical certificate or the Indiana College Core in your high school career. You would have to have seventy-five hours of work-based learning and then demonstrate skill development, communication, collaboration and work ethic. How we determine if someone does that at this point? Again, we're not exactly sure what those requirements will be, but this just outlines those specific paths. Again, I want to look at just a few of these as we move on. You can kind of work your way through these, this table and these three columns and just see the outline of what those specific different seal options look for students. I do want to highlight with the employment seal, complete one hundred and fifty hours of work-based learning. So again, seal-related, honors plus seal, seventy-five hours of work-based learning. Employment seal, one hundred and fifty hours of work-based learning. Employment honors plus seal, six hundred and fifty hours of work-based learning. So obviously, there's a extreme heavy emphasis in being able to provide students the opportunity to engage in work-based learning during high school for that. And then not to shortchange the enlistment seal, but certainly we're fortunate to be able to have GROTC at our high school, which provides that. And then achieve a score of thirty-one on the ASFAB, complete a career exploration program, attend its school. And again, you're going to see more of those things on skill development, communication, collaboration and work ethic. So there's a lot, there's an awful lot there in, in terms of the seal. What I really want to do, just with all that information coming at you so fast and furious, just talk about why this, why I view this as such a great opportunity for us based on the conversations that we've been having specifically around our goals and our strategic plans. So I took two specific goals specifically out of our strategic plan. One of those is increase the percentage of students graduating with high school with advanced enrollment, employment and/or enlistment credentials. So that was written with the purpose of mind of making sure we're pushing students in order to earn honors and honors plus seals. Right now, the way advanced enrollment, employment or enlistment credentials are defined is a percentage of twelfth-grade students earning an associate's degree, an Indiana College Core or a technical certificate. So this, this data right now is coming right from the Indiana IGPS dashboard. And graduating high school with advanced credentialing is really what it's referring to. Right now, Warren Township, our, our current reality is we have about four percent or exactly four percent of our students who are graduating with advanced credentialing as defined by an associate's degree, Indiana College Core or technical certificate. And just for reference, the state average is five-point-five percent. The next one is increase the percentage of students who complete college coursework prior to graduation. We want to increase that to sixty-seven percent. That's defined by the percentage of twelfth-grade students passing an AP exam or a dual-credit class prior to graduation. Right now, about forty, well, forty-nine percent of our students meet that requirement. Either earn a dual-credit, pass an AP exam for that. And that state average currently is fifty-six-point-five percent. So as you can see, and I'm going back to this readiness seal slide, our goals are specifically targeted about increasing the expectation for achievement for our students to be able to accomplish some of the most challenging seals. Not just to graduate high school. We have a graduation goal. We'll continue to focus on graduating students. But simply graduating students without earning credentials is not best preparing them for their life after high school, which is why we have to raise that bar in that expectation for students. Next, I just want to talk a few short minutes on kind of what some of these initial steps for how we're preparing for the class of two thousand and twenty-nine. So building upon the success of that freshman seminar course, as you know, we started that freshman academy this year. We're very intentional about the freshman seminar class. Another component that's not listed as a direct requirement within a graduation or within the actual diploma is for students to create a graduation plan or a high school plan. Right now, the preparation for that is embedding students' exposure to what coursework looks like, exposing students to their pathway in order to get a readiness seal and having all of that embedded within that freshman seminar course. Give students the opportunity to explore the robust course offerings. I know, I think it was just last month, we had the conversation about how do we make sure students and families in the community know about the opportunities that are available in Warren Township, specifically at the Career Center, specifically at other, all the different course offerings there. And again, from a student lens, it's embedding that directly in some of the instruction and the coursework that they're getting. And then make sure that they have all the information they need as a student to create the high school experience they desire to meet their long-term goals. Back to the original first slide when we were talking about why change the Indiana high school diploma, increase relevancy, making sure students were equipped with the knowledge and information before it was too late and they could not, they could no longer pursue their passion or interests because it was too late for them to make that decision. Moving a step further, thinking about what that looks like. For us, it's about starting that conversation even before students get into high school. So starting next year for our eighth-grade class, so our current seventh graders, which is a class of two thousand and thirty, we're going to have students build their high school plan in eighth grade. We're going to expose them to what course opportunities look like. We're going to expose them to the seals. We're going to talk about what it means to be on an enrollment pathway, an enlistment pathway or an employment pathway. We're not going to lock them into a specific schedule or anything and make them commit their four years of their life when they're an eighth grader to sign on the dotted line. But it's about providing the appropriate exposure and instruction to students so they know what opportunities are there. So that if they know that they want to go on an enrollment pathway, that they are going to have to take eight credits of math. They are going to have to make sure that not only academically are they preparing themselves and take advantage of those different opportunities, but they are making sure through their course scheduling, making through the other opportunities and the other experiences that they want to have in high school for what the ultimately will, what the reality will be for them. And I'll leave you, at least with this presentation, I'll leave you with a few thoughts. So a truly believed a class of two thousand and twenty-nine will benefit from the increased flexibility and opportunities to tailor their high school experience. But there's a lot of work to figure out exactly how we make that a reality for, you know, nearly four thousand nine-twelve students. So currently, things that we're deep in the thinking process, getting professional development on. I know next week, the nine-twelve team and myself will be attending a new Indiana diploma, professional development and collaboration sessions. So we can talk not just amongst ourselves, but with other districts, just about different ways that all of us are trying to tackle this work. You know, but for right now, for us, it really starts, starts about reviewing all the course offerings to provide students opportunities to add credentials of value to their resume. If we truly want to add credentials of values to our students when they're in high school, that conversation can't happen just when they're a sophomore talking about their junior year or just a junior when we're talking about their senior year. It has to be intentional, it has to be planned and we have to have an efficient way of offering those courses. We love the expansive course offerings that we have at the high school. That being said, we have to make sure that they're aligned to student interest and need to meet their goals. You saw a big part of those seals and a big part of credential is for those on the enrollment seal, it's really an analysis and look at the AP and dual-credit opportunities that our students have. We know if you want to earn an Indiana College Core diploma, you're going to have to participate in a sequence in a sequence of dual credit courses that, as you're scheduling yourself your freshman year, that has an impact ultimately on what would be available for you your senior year. For the employment seal, looking at the different CTE and other pathways that are offered there, and making sure students have equitable access to get into those programs as they certainly want to add those credentials of value to the resume. And then ultimately, I can't stress this enough, increase work-based learning opportunities to ensure students have the ability to earn a readiness seal. We can't allow access to be the reason why a student doesn't have the ability to earn the seal. We have a lot of work to do to figure out how to expand that access with the community, with employers. We will be calling upon the community and employers to support us in this endeavor, to support our students in this endeavor by opening their workplaces for experiences for students, which will be a critical part of this to make that a reality. Feel like I just said a whole lot of stuff really quickly, but I'll tell you, this is only the beginning, and there's a lot of work and then more information to come, but I was excited to at least give you an update on the initial things that are going on and what the future of our high school diploma looks like for our students. Happy to answer any questions. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I, I, I'm focusing on the honors plus seal, where you have enlistments and services. How are you going to get a kid to enroll in ROTC at collegiate level in high school?
Yeah, I don't know if I can give you a direct answer on how we would directly be able to do that. A few things that I would just point out is you, to earn that honors plus, you have to do one of those three. So either 50 on the ASFAB, enroll at ROTC at the collegiate level, or be accept, an acceptance into the service academy. You don't have to accomplish all three, thank goodness, but it's one of those. If you look at, I don't want to say the future of accountability really for Indiana schools, there's a lot of metrics that are really developed about what students do after they leave us. So when you look at the IGPS dashboard now, some of the ways that they're measuring and comparing schools is what is a student's median income five years after they graduate high school? So there's a lot of things contingent upon what a student does after they leave high school, that they're linking back to their high school experience as a measure of accountability.
I, I can see a kid, it's going to be a challenge for a kid, a high school kid, trying to get a 50%, 50%. But assuming he gets that, but it's going to be a challenge him being able to accept the.
Accepted to a service academy for the requirements that is required to get into service academy. You can't, you can't be in high school while you can, you know, get, you know, accept a service academy. You're going to have to, well, I think it's going to be difficult to get those other two that right there, the enlistment, enrollment in the ROTC at the collegiate level, but not in college, and then acceptance to a service academy. That has to take a lot of preparation before he gets to really his senior year.
Absolutely. And I think one of the other parts, and I know some feedback that we, or I can speak for myself, I directly provided, when you look at some of these seals and you look at some of the, so I'm going to transition back to the enrollment skill. When they talk about earning four credits in AP, some students are taking those AP tests the spring, in the spring of their senior year, and we don't get the results, but the students don't even get the results back until after they graduate. So how they're going to be able to configure or determine what, if a student earns, you know, Ms. Brown, if you, if, when you graduate high school and after you take all your tests, I'm assuming, if I know anything about you, that if you were in the class of 2029 and you saw these requirements, you would be going after some type of seal. If I walk across that stage, I would want to know if I've earned that seal or not, not have to wait till August when the AP scores come out to say, oh yeah, I actually earned the seal. I want to know, I want to know that at the time of graduation. And Mr. Dorsey, I think the same thing applies where the enrollment and ROTC at the collegiate level may not necessarily happen in high school. Obviously, it may happen two years later, but then gets linked back to that honors seal plus for their high school diploma, which is some of the critical feedback that we have given about how they will measure seal completion because of the timeliness of when some of these events will take place for our students.
I think you're going to have some difficulty with that one.
I, sorry.
And, and, and I'd be interested in knowing if you had a chance to talk to, you know, Littlewood and any of his guys in reference to that particular challenge that.
No, but I'm going to be with a group of people on Tuesday, and I'll certainly bring it up.
I, I kind of wonder if, you know, I don't know if Ivy Tech has ROTC or if IUPUI, which is no longer IUPUI, has ROTC. I know Purdue does, because when I was there, I took an ROTC class, a climbing and rappelling class. And so maybe it would be easier for students that are around a college that has that. But just like in the enrollment section where they have to get associate's degree, I mean, they can get some of those classes through us probably, but they may not be able to get all of them to get these. So they may actually have to go to IUPUI to get that degree. So like if they're, they live in Lafayette, maybe if they go to Purdue and take an ROTC class.
Yeah, I think, I, I think in, the next time I have the opportunity to give another update, to talk about how we're communicating more practical ways for how our students can actually accomplish these things. So for us, on the honors plus seal for the enrollment, the direct pathway for our students to earn an honors seal plus for the enrollment piece is Indiana College Core. The associate's degree, well, there's some opportunities for technical certificate. What we will be talking, or what we are talking to freshmen about, is if you're targeting that honors plus seal, we have the opportunity for students to earn the Indiana College Core, which will qualify them for that, as long as they meet all the requirements of the honors seal and that 75 hours of work-based learning. So whether it's the enrollment seal and Indiana College Core, or providing more practical guidance and pathways for students about how they would get that enlistment, honors plus seal, Mr. Dorsey, we have to create, and that's why we need community, colleges, universities, employers, there's going to have to be a partnership approach to this because some of these are not completely out of our control, but we have more influence on how we can support some students in some of these areas than others.
This was very informative. It was good information.
Okay, thank you so much, Ryan. We appreciate your time, as always. We are going to move on to the business of citizens' presence, and I know we have a yellow card. I'm going to thank you for your patience this evening. Mr. Humphrey?
Mr. Jonathan Monroe?
Yes. Hi. The board and members of the community. Thanks for your time. You guys have a lot to be proud of, but clearly there's a lot of challenges at the moment as well. I'm going to try to talk.
On the microphone there?
Sure.
So everybody can hear you. Thank you.
Can you hear me now? Yes, good. I'm going to try to talk while I bring up Google Maps here. I live in Lawrence Township, and I'm a volunteer with a campaign called Forest for Indy, okay? And we try to preserve urban forest. And I'm here tonight because there's a, one particular forest, it's very close to one of your schools, to Hawthorne Elementary, in fact. And this woods I'm going to show you here is actually the largest unprotected woods in Marion County, okay? And it's 76 acre woods, and it's never been plowed under, okay? Which means it's pretty much a remnant of the woods that covered the whole city at one point in time. So I'm going to move the cursor here to show Hawthorne Elementary. And then this is what we call East Side Flatwoods. And you might even have seen some posters or lawn signs around, okay? So the city of Indianapolis has an opportunity to buy these woods, okay? The owners want to sell them. They want to, they're willing to sell them at a discount with the aim of preserving them, because these woods have been in their family for generations. The city has identified over their various years that they actually want to acquire these woods, turn it into a nature park for public access, again, to preserve the woods. The mayor's office, just at the moment, seems like they need a bit of encouragement from the neighbors and from people who have a stake and have an interest in this. So our community-based campaign is asking locals to contact the mayor's office. I don't presume to tell the board how to sort of go about the, the sort of business of weighing in on it, but naturally, given the proximity of the school to the woods and the sort of development pressures in the area, we think it'd be just natural for you to, to sort of express your interest in, in preserving these woods. As I said, there's a lot of development pressure in the area. There's, we, we expect that there actually will be some construction in this zone here. But the plan that we have, that we'd love to see is most of this open space and all of these woods turned into a park. If the purchase of these woods doesn't occur soon, then it's likely they will be sold to developers. Who knows when that, those woods be demolished? I'm not saying that they would or be imminent, but the opportunity to buy them is like now, it would seem. And we're encouraging the mayor to use funds this March to, to approach the owners, and it would be a $3 million price tag is what we're, what they're looking at. So, do you have any questions?
I don't believe so, and we, it has been your three minutes.
Okay.
Mr. Monroe, I want to thank you for your time this evening, and thank you for your patience. If you want to leave any materials, just go ahead and leave them there, and we'll collect them on the way.
Sure thing. Okay. I will leave some materials.
Okay. And thank you so much. We always appreciate community involvement, so. Yeah, it's, sorry, it's not, it's standing board policy that we don't comment on community comments immediately, so. And with that, we are going to move on to action items, starting with Matt.
Good evening, President Burke, Dr. Hanson, members of the board. We've got two related board policies that we're going to ask the board to adopt revisions to this evening. Board policy 7310 and 7450 both deal with property inventory and the definition of capitalization with federal grant purchases specifically. And so the, the most significant change in both of these board policies is it moves the definition of equipment from $5,000 to $10,000, which, to be candid, primarily resulted in accounting change from, we have to do federal reporting. It eases the burden at some level, and this was made possible by a change in the federal CFR earlier in 2024, changing that definition from 5,000 to 10,000. So in both of these policies, we're looking to align local policy with the revised federal CFR. Policy 7310 specifically deals with the disposition of surplus equipment, as we discussed last month. And so with that said, I would ask for the board's approval of the revised version of policy 7310. I'm happy to answer any questions.
So moved.
We've got Julie making a motion. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
And Terry seconding it. With that, Mr. Secretary, if we could have a vote?
Ms. Gloria?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Julie?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Ms. LaShawna?
Yes.
And myself is a yes, and Madam President?
Yes.
Yes, that passes unanimously.
Excellent, that passes unanimously. Can we have a motion? I would like to entertain a motion for policy 7450.
So moved.
Julie made the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Terry seconded the motion. Once again, Mr. Secretary, if you could call the roll for a vote. Oh, is there any discussion? My apologies. Okay. Hearing and seeing none, if you could call the roll.
Ms. Gloria?
Yes.
Mr. Howard? Yes. Ms. Julie?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Ms. LaShawna?
Yes.
Myself is a yes, and Madam President?
Yes.
The motion passes?
Excellent. And with that, we are going to move on to a public hearing.
Yep. So with the, President Burke, with your approval, we're going to open up a public hearing. It can be within the confines of the board meeting. We don't have to suspend the board meeting or anything of that sort. So if it's okay with you, I'm going to open a public hearing?
Excellent, sounds great.
Okay. So I want to provide some brief explanation to the board and to the community about what we're, we're doing this evening. I'm going to lay out the action item, then I'm going to walk backward to how we got here. So board, we're asking for your authorization to spend $3.5 million within the education fund on curricular materials. What I want to make clear is that this isn't new money we weren't otherwise going to spend. This is a change from one fund to the other. So by way of background, we adopt our budget each year in March, and we operate on a fiscal year basis. Fiscal year from us works out really conveniently, lines up with the school year, July 1st to June 30th, lines up with our major funding source, state tuition support. We're an outlier in adopting on that cycle. We're one of two school districts that do. And every once in a while, you can, you can run into a hitch with the process, and so this year, we do have to adapt. So specifically, what happened is, two years ago, as part of the 2023 budget, as we recall, the General Assembly funded curricular materials, so that doesn't change at all. Where our parents no longer have to pay for curricular materials. For years before that, curricular materials was in a standalone fund, Fund 900, the Curriculum Materials Fund, previously called Textbook Rental. When we adopted our budget last year, that was still the law of the land, and that fund was still in place. After we adopted the budget in March, the General Assembly session wrapped up, and one of the measures that passed in that session eliminated the Curriculum Materials Fund and required that state funding move into the Education Fund, effective on January 1st, 2025. And now, as we purchase curricular materials, we also have to pay for them now out of the Education Fund, as opposed to the Curriculum Materials Fund. So the next action item we're going to have this evening is discussion of the actual curricular materials themselves. What we're asking for this evening is the board's authorization to spend money out of the Education Fund on curricular materials. So I'm happy to answer any questions, and I will say, as part of this hearing too, we, we have to go through a, a public comment process too.
Yes, and I do want to make the comment that this public hearing was appropriately advertised and put out there to the public. Are there any public comments? We will start there. Okay, hearing and seeing none. Do we have any discussion or questions for Matt?
Did you say it was published?
It was published, yes.
We, we published it in the Star and the IBJ on Friday, February 7th.
Okay, not seeing any other questions and not having any public comment, then we are going to close the public hearing.
Yep.
And we are going to move on to Resolution 635.25.
And, yep, so, so essentially, the resolution, this is an addendum to the budget that the board authorized last March, and that was certified by the Department of Local Government Finance last month. It would move our education fund budget from $90 million to $93.5 million, with the additional appropriation going into supplies for the purpose of paying for curricular materials. I do want to share transparency for the board and for the public. We actually don't believe we're going to spend a full $3.5 million. We advertise at that level to give ourselves as much flexibility to negotiate as possible. The, the actual amount we're going to spend is, is going to be probably somewhere south of $3 million out of the Education Fund this year. But with that said, we'd still ask for the board's approval at the amount we advertised.
Thank you. And with that, do I have a motion on the resolution?
So moved.
Julie made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Terry seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing and seeing- Hearing and seeing none, Mr. Secretary, if you could call a vote.
Ms. Gloria?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Julie? Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Ms. LaShawna?
Yes.
And there would be a yes for myself, Madam President?
Yes.
The motion passes.
That motion passes. Thank you so much. Thank you for your time this evening, Matt, and we are back to Ryan. Oh my goodness, it's curriculum adoption. Who could have seen that coming?
Shocking, shocking. We're now talking about curriculum adoption. President Burke, Dr. Hanson, members of the board, um, tonight, um, I'm here to talk to you about English Language Arts curriculum adoption. I will say, as, uh, Matt alluded to, this will end, um, with an action request to approve, uh, the recommendation, but, um, uh, we're not quite there yet, so let me get through this. I also want to reference, uh, you all have a black folder as well. I'll be referencing some materials, uh, within that, so I just wanted to make sure you're aware of that before I jumped in. With the reading, uh, English Language Arts curriculum adoption, and this is focused really, or specifically on grades K through 8, uh, our focus tonight is investing in academic excellence and student achievement and alignment to the board and strategic plan and focus areas. A lot of tonight, I'm going to talk about the process and timeline, because I'll start off by saying there's no such thing as a perfect curriculum. Um, so we really value the process, the feedback, the inclusiveness, um, and hence, in which how we get to the recommendation, um, for that. So, uh, this is a broad overview, and I want to go into some specific details quarter by quarter, um, in what led us to making this recommendation that, uh, I'm going to make tonight. Curriculum adoption doesn't happen overnight. Um, it's, it's a long process, uh, takes a lot of time. But again, I, I think there's a significant amount of value in the process. So really, when we started thinking about adopting a K8 reading curriculum for the 25, 26 school year, um, it was really summer of 2024 when we really started those initial steps. Um, so looking at the evaluation of curricular options that we had, and I'm going to talk about some statutory requirements that we had for that, uh, talk about how we got to a pilot process and how we selected that, then moving on to how we supported that pilot, uh, how we supported the teachers, what that collaboration looked like, and then really embedding, once we got into the second quarter of the school year, teacher feedback, reference checks, engagements, and feedback from parents and caregivers, um, the survey, I'll share some data, um, of what our teachers' feedback was, um, and some testimonials from teachers and parents as well, as we looked at the different options. And then really, there's the, um, cost and analysis, just taking all the data, looking at all the different components of the evaluation rubric we use, which, uh, again, I'll get into more detail, so that's, that's a very high overview, but just wanted to set the stage with that. So I, I don't want to reference this as boring stuff, but I think it's important to understand just what the statutory requirements for curriculum adoption, especially with something as high-profile as reading is, in the state of Indiana code, or it's state of Indiana code. In the state of Indiana, there's a specific code, which is referenced there, that requires the IDOE to evaluate curriculum materials and create an approved list to inform local adoptions. So, um, I have no idea how many available reading curriculum options K8 there are in this, in the United States. I can tell you specifically, um, there are three core reading curriculums that are fully approved by the state of Indiana. And what I mean by fully approved is there's more than three that are on the approval list. I think there's five total, but some of them say you can approve them, but you can't use this part of them, or you can, uh, you can use this component of the curriculum, but you can't use all of it, whi- which is just absolutely confusing for teachers and staff, and it's an implementation challenge to say that you can use part of the curriculum, but not all the curriculum, and trying to look and how to monitor that and support that, uh, is overwhelming. So there are three core reading curriculums that are fully approved, um, for K8 in the state of Indiana. Out of those three approved reading curriculums, only two vendors cover the whole grade span K through 8. Uh, so for coherence sake, we think it's really important that our students, um, that our curriculum has vertical articulation, uh, meaning that students aren't jumping in and out of different curriculums as they matriculate the way through, uh, their educational journeys. So I say all that just to set the stage, because tonight, I'm really going to share with you about what we went through to really evaluate two specific vendors for reading curriculum. Um, the, all of that, those statutory requirements in our initial review, really focused on, focused us on two main vendors slash products. So Amplify CKLA, um, or LA, depending on the grade land, um, which core knowledge language arts, or just language arts if you're in the 6, 8 space, and then McGraw-Hill Open Court, um, you know, and/or and StudySync as you get in 6, 8. Um, so those two provided an articulation from K to 8. We felt that we, um, with, um, the independent reviews, and then obviously on the Indiana approval list, it really allowed us to focus and set our sights on a high-level review of two, uh, rather than starting in the abyss of dozens and dozens and dozens, um, to really focus in that support. The other thing that we've had a lot of success with, and we really, uh, leveraged to help gain valuable feedback, is a pilot process. Uh, we were able to identify and select teachers to pilot the curriculums during this school year. So as we speak today, we have, uh, multiple teams of teachers piloting both options in all grade levels. Um, so those teachers were, um, um, expressed some interest, and then we also thought it was really important to make sure that if a third-grade team at, um, I'm going to say Hawthorne, because I know Hawthorne's one of them, if a third-grade team at Hawthorne wanted to, we allowed the whole team to pilot, so they would have enhanced collaboration. So it wasn't, one teacher's doing this curriculum, one teacher's doing this curriculum, the whole team was, the principal, the, the reading coach, everyone could support it at a high level. We didn't want, we realized with the pilot that we would have multiple curriculums going on. We didn't want to have three curriculums going on within the same school or the same space, because that, again, that just gets overwhelming, uh, when we think about what that support looks like. And then before the school year started, as we identified those people, obviously providing that training, uh, for the pilot teachers and the administrators, so that they were fully equipped to be able to utilize that curriculum to the best of their ability from day one was critically important for us. So we went through that process to identify them, did the training, got them their materials, got them ready, so they could start the year. The other thing we did is, we let the teachers that were piloting to know that their pilot was for this whole school year. E- every single teacher knows we're making our recommendation tonight. Um, and for the teachers who are piloting the curriculum that we're not recommending, they will continue to pilot that curriculum for the rest of the year, just for continuity. So, um, again, trying to be, um, I don't want to say sensitive to the burden, but understanding that it doesn't make sense to switch curriculums in the middle of the year. We'll talk about how we'll prep them for next year, but it doesn't make sense to make that change now. So anyway, that was this summer, um, as we looked at that. July through September, uh, I know July's summer, but we also start school in July. So what we really thought about, as I alluded to this, just curriculum implementation training for teachers. Um, you know, w- we knew we were looking at new reading curriculum. We were right off, um, a really, um, um, especially at the K4 level, uh, we were riding the high of getting some I read 3 success, uh, and significantly improving that. We knew that with the new curriculum, um, came some new approaches and, and different, um, ways or things to look at as we were trying to continue some of those strong foundations that we had built, um, but just really making sure that we provided the appropriate, um, professional learning opportunities for those teachers. Again, not just the teachers, but the coaches, the principals, everyone supporting in that building to be able to get what that was. We also know, and we've heard this throughout this year, and we knew it to be true this summer when we were talking about it, teachers really value collaborative opportunities with their peers. Um, so getting teachers together who are utilizing the same materials to learn from one another, um, to talk about the obstacles that they were facing, to problem solve with each other, um, uh, was a critical part of the pilot. It'll be a critical part of the implementation support as we move forward into next year. Uh, but we knew that, that was, um, that was important. We also utilized the pilot as a way to interview the vendors. Um, and this was a really telling part that I think, um, was helpful and influential through the evaluation process as well. Obviously, vendors want our business, um, with that, but I'm more interested in the level of support that they're providing us and our teachers through that process. If they weren't going to be able to provide a high-level support during an evaluation process, what were we going to be able to expect from them after we purchased the material? Um, so, and we were upfront with them about that, that they were, um, they were under a microscope, right? It, it, look, we weren't asking them to jump and them say how high, but at the same time, we wanted to make sure that if our teachers had needs and how the best utilize the curriculum and the resources that they had, that they would be responsive to our staff, they would be responsive to our questions, and that, that they had the, not only appropriate levels of support, but the right type of support for our teachers when they needed it. So that was influential. That, um, looked from the beginning like them collaborating with our teachers, whether it be weekly or monthly virtual meetings with the pilot teachers, them coming into classrooms to watch and provide encouragement, anything around that, um, was part of the process and very helpful for us. The October to December timeline, um, the other thing that we really wanted to dive into was, um, learning from experiences with other Indiana school districts that are utilizing this curriculum. So relying on our, um, peers in Marion County, uh, other Indiana school districts that had adopted these curriculums, to learn about not only their teachers and administrators' experience with the curriculum itself, but their experience with the vendors and the provider, or the vendors and the support that they were providing as well. Um, we had a lot of conversations with different districts, different types of districts, about, uh, the successes and challenges that they were, they were having, uh, which, again, doesn't necessarily mean we'll have the exact same successes and challenges, but allows us to better plan for and support implementation of whatever curriculum that we move forward with, because although we were able to identify a lot of those components through the pilot itself, um, sometimes it's nice to know what other people found, uh, extremely helpful, or what other people found, um, not as helpful, as we started to put together our implementation support plan, our professional development plan for how we were going to implement that new curriculum. Um, the other thing that was critically important was to make sure that every teacher in grades KU8, K8, who had anything to do with reading, had curriculum materials available for both curri, from both vendors to be able to review and provide feedback on. So that takes, um, that looks a little different, um, based on, um, what level of involvement the teacher wants to have with that. So again, if you looked at any, a lot of times they're in the media center, sometimes they're in other, um, uh, LGI rooms, uh, but grade-level content, grade-level materials available for all teachers to review, whether they were piloting or not. So if you were piloting one, we may, we wanted to make sure you had access to see what the other one looked like, uh, same thing vice versa. And if you weren't engaged in a pilot, we wanted to make sure they had the opportunity to review, review both of those as well. On top of that, it just wasn't what I call a blind review. You go in and look at the books, look at the pictures, see what that looks like, uh, but we created opportunities for the curriculum vendors to come in and provide formal presentations to their teachers to give overviews of the curriculum. Um, that seems like a given, but at the same time, we wanted to make sure teachers had the opportunity to hear directly from, um, the implementation specialists, from the vendors specifically, um, about, uh, at least their recommended ways of curriculum implementation, be able to address any questions teachers were coming in or looking at through the review. And then we did do a formal survey. Uh, one of the things that I mentioned that I would reference in this is, um, um, I don't know how much level of detail you want to get to on the evaluation rubric, but there is a copy of the evaluation rubric in there, and I'll, I'll talk about the components shortly as we go through. Um, and that's what the feedback from teachers, um, was based off on. And then January and February, um, we, we also wanted to make sure that all parents and caregivers had the opportunity to, to review the curriculum materials and provide feedback, um, uh, as a newer tradition. Schools have multiple family literacy nights now. I know in collaboration with Dr. Anderson, uh, we had each school make sure that they had one focused in January, uh, not specifically for I read awareness, but also to make sure that parents were aware of the curriculum materials that we were reviewing, giving them the opportunity to review and allow them to provide narrative feedback or talk about, uh, a- areas of interest that they saw in them or any questions that they had, so we could address those as well. We really started housing in on professional development and implementation planning in January, once we got past, uh, once we got into 2025 and this new year. The other thing that I think, um, I've seen districts make mistakes, not us, but I think what, one thing was really important for this evaluation process is, we fully negotiated two contracts and two professional development plans from both vendors, um, to get a true comparison of total cost and all overall value, and to really take a look at what that professional development package is. So for example, if a, if a, uh, which is what we didn't do, um, but what I mean by that is, if you say you want to go with curriculum X, then start talking about negotiating a contract, or then start talking about the professional development package, I don't think you get the vendor's best foot forward. Um, I think, um, I'm not a used car salesman, uh, maybe I should have been, I don't know, but at the end of the day, um, the, the goal is to make sure each vendor thinks you want to select them, um, and then try to squeeze as much blood out of that turnout as you can, as you're trying to negotiate that price. So one thing I'm proud of our team and how we operated and went through this process is, um, we certainly had interests as we were looking at very parts, but we negotiated contracts with both, not just for curriculum materials, but assessment pieces and professional developments. We had a true comparison, um, which ultimately resulted, uh, into some saving, I believe, into savings for us. Which again, is that last point, just those contract negotiations. When it got really tense, we had to bring in Matt in to tell you, like, we can't buy anything if you guys don't do this, and then, um, you know, he, he helped us drive some things home for that. So anyway, I say all that because I wanted you to know that there is months and months and months of focused work to get to this recommendation. This is not on a whim. I know we had a lot of conversations about what curriculum we're using, how it best supports our students. Obviously, this process, um, was, um, very important for us. So I, I mentioned the evaluation criteria, and I don't want to bore anyone with this. But we tried to use some independent evaluation criteria as well to look at what, uh, research says is best practice in a curriculum evaluation, um, and then looked at some additional components. We had teachers rate everything other than overall cost and value and professional development, and the reason why the professional development was, is because not everyone had access to the professional development for that, so we could have, um, a, um, just 11 play, level playing field for that. Um, we started this school year talking a lot about standard alignment, and that was the very first part of our evaluation rubric. Again, uh, not just the read then, but instructional design, foundational skills, uh, you're really looking at some specific components of reading that not only are foundational research pieces, but in pieces that have served us well, uh, in our past success, uh, writing development, assessment, support for ex- exceptional learners, cultural inclusive, inclusive, inclusivity and representation, teacher support, digital tools, family involvement, resources, and then obviously those last two I mentioned. You can see how the rubric was broke down in the handout, but again, very detailed as far as the feedback that we were looking. So I said all that to get to this slide. Um, what we really looked at, and this is teacher survey responses, and I refer to this as favorability ratings. Uh, what I mean by that is, there is a four-point scale from exemplary to needs improvement, and if a teacher rated it a three or a four, I considered it a positive mark or a favorable rating. Anything less than that wouldn't be encompassed with that. So you look at all of these different components from the evaluation rubric, as far as how we looked and evaluated this. This is 100% teacher feedback that you're seeing right now. Everywhere, with the exception of support for exceptional learners, was rated higher for Amplify CKLA in LA, uh, the McGraw-Hill Open Court, um, or StudySync. Some of those more significant than others, um, but a teacher favorability rating, um, really outpaced, uh, with Amplify than it did in McGraw-Hill. Now, before you ask me the question, what about the OEL and support for OEL material? Now, before you ask me the question, what about the OEL and support for OEL materials? This feedback was exceptionally helpful for us as well, because some of the components that we asked them to add on to the curriculum materials was additional support for exceptional learners. Now, we've had a lot of conversation about how we best support our multilingual learners, and a lot of that was coming from there, which, when you review the quotes, there's a specific piece called Language Studio that we made sure every grade level at every school had access to as a way to address one of those components specifically in there for that. So overall, just from a baseline teacher feedback, that was what that teacher feedback looked like. I did just pull out a few teacher testimonials, because I think it's not just what the rating was, it's kind of the spirit of the feedback that we were able to pull directly from that survey. For someone like me in a position like me, there's some words that really stick out, and I get excited about. Rigor is one of them, I know that's weird, but at the same time, it's really important for our talk about increasing cognitive demand for our students so they can master grade level standards. These are our teachers. I feel that CKLA provides the rigor our students need, and our students love the connection to science and social studies through the reading curriculum. The other handout that's in there, that's the more colorful one, is just a series of knowledge, it's, it's called the knowledge component of the CKLA curriculum, that embeds a lot of science and social studies components within there, that at first glance, our teachers were terrified that our students wouldn't love. After the pilot and the feedback, they were googly eyed over it, I don't know the best term to express over that, but they were just excited about the connections that our students were making to some, what some people refer to as, you know, content that they weren't sure how they would react to. I love this second one, I'm grateful that CKLA gets me excited about teaching again, and I'm surprised how engaged the students are on the topics. They're accessible while still being relevant and culturally diverse. Again, that's, it's hard not to like the comment, not that you like comments or don't like comments, but again, it excites me that it gets people exciting. And then, I love how much my students are learning, enjoying what they're learning during the knowledge block with CKLA. And again, the relevant culturally diverse topics within the knowledge block specifically represented in Amplify, which is CKLA, is something that has just been said over and over and over by our teachers, and it just really is going to serve as a foundation and springboard for us as we look to implement. And then, again, pulling out a few parent testimonials from their fillback, feedback, just to look at the lens that they're coming at this. CKLA is more well-rounded in preparation for high school and the world that they're entering, thought that was an insightful comment based on the topics that they're looking at. CKLA shows more minority voices and culture. Again, we're seeing a lot of reference to that one component of cultural inclusiveness and representation within the content and the knowledge block of the CKLA. And then, I thought this was insightful, or just helpful feedback for us. I like the paper resources that CKLA has, so I can stay more connected with my child's work at home. Again, that parent involvement and parent resource that comes along with this, it's not all on the iPad, right? Nothing wrong with iPads, but it's not all on the iPad and the physical copies of the books and those components, or something that really came out, especially at that six, eight level. Ultimately, I get to all that to tell you that our recommendation for curriculum adoption is Amplify, CKLA, and LA grades K eight moving forward. And ultimately, ultimately, if you ask me to bullet five reasons why, I'll tell you this in no particular order. Independent review score Amplify CKLA is the highest rated curriculum available in Indiana. We rely a lot on edreports.org for curriculum reviews, and I can make those reports available to you guys if you would like to see them. But highest rated curriculum available in the state of Indiana, which is why, I think another reason why, with your approval, every Marion County school district will be using Amplify as their reading curriculum for that, which is another factor for us as well. Teacher, parent, caregiver, and student feedback all demonstrate its preferred option. It's one thing to be the highest rated curriculum if no one likes it, but the feedback was in almost all cases clearly pointed at Amplify as being the option or the choice, the desired choice. One of the most important factors here, not that anyone's more, but the Amplify professional development offerings and implementation support are exceptional. If I said that the pilots were an interview for what type of support that we would get, Amplify, and I don't know if any curriculum vendors listened to this presentation or not, but Amplify far and away exceeded our, I'll say my, expectations and gave me confidence that we could rely on them as a trusted partner in implementation for support for our teachers. And unfortunately, McGraw-Hill did not, which was a factor. The overall cost of both options, so you say you negotiated two contracts, ironically, at the end of the day, the overall cost for both options is almost practically identical. One of the things about having an approved curriculum vendor is that they have to have specific state pricing that they publish on the DOE website. With the additional options that we wanted to make sure that we got with teacher kits, with ML supports, and other assessment packages, when you look at the full package options for there, with an adoption of this size, you're talking about about a $50,000 difference between the two, which is remarkable, that they're that close. And then ultimately, that last part of the rubric, overall value of Amplify exceeds our expectations and ultimately is the recommendation. Before I ask for your approval, I want to talk to you about some of our professional development and implementation support that with your approval tonight, we're going to start working on. We are very intentional, I know we had the opportunity, was it like, two weeks ago, when we were talking about the Lilly Grant in general, just about talking about the specific ELA support, and this are some of these components that I said, I'll give you some more information when I talk to you in a few weeks at the February board meeting. So I'm here talking to you at the February board meeting about that. The implementation, we have, we are ready, or we will be ready, every K eight teacher of reading will get two half-day launch trainings in May before the school year's out, where they get all their teacher materials at the time of the training for the, you know, for next school year. It's not, I go on summer break, when do I get my curriculum, school starts, it's in the warehouse, where do I go, you know, all those questions, all those things that frustrate teachers for valid reasons. Part of the reason we're talking about this in February is with the intentional, we talk usually the old-school maths language, TBR, we had those things, we talked about in March, we may have approved them in April as we talked about that. We're asking for approval in February tonight, so we can order materials, have training materials available, get them in teachers' hands, fully support the implementation, not only in May, but start to provide professional development sessions over the summer to fully get people all the support they need to make this a success. And then, as we referenced, when we talked a little bit about ELA implementation support, contracted implementation coach to support teachers and leaders through this. This is or will be a vent, or a Amplify employee that we will contract with, the Work in Warren Township, onsite four days a week, where we'll be able to assign the specific support to building, to, it's not about monitoring, it's about supporting teachers. It's about making sure they have the appropriate resources and knowledge and access to be able to get their questions answered, to be able to provide the most, the best experience for our students as we adopt this curriculum. With all that said, I'll be happy to answer any questions, but I would like to ask for your approval. All of the quotations for all the reference materials are included in your folder. I provided a memo as well that outlines the payment terms over the course. This is a six-year adoption, but we're not spending all six years upfront. Some of those numbers are there, but I'm happy to answer any questions about the contract, the process, the curriculum. We're ready to get started, and obviously, would love for you to approve it tonight so we can.
Are there any questions, Ryan?
So Ryan, clarification. It's a six-year contract. Are we completely locked into that six years if this curriculum does not meet the standards or challenge our youth to the level that we, we want them to be achieving?
There are termination clauses within the quotation contract language that's in there. I will say, they are very, in the unlikely event that that happened, we are challenged on, not, so yes, we can get out, not of everything, the specific, there's a lot of different parts to this, there's a PD contract, which obviously we get out, the assessment pieces a year by year that we get out, the boost reading component that's in there, that's coincided with the yearly curricular fees, we can get out. We're buying all the teacher materials upfront, which is, we couldn't return them if that happened, so some components are we can, but there is a termination clause. It's not, it's not a no questions asked termination clause, it would have to have cause, which would be harder to, would have to be argued probably by, through litigation, but there is a termination clause. I know that wasn't clear, but it's.
Ryan, I know I'm asking years ahead of events, but when is science and social studies adoptions?
Depends on the grade level that we're looking at. Most likely, social studies would be next school year.
I work in the district where I get to teach, and our students are on this program, boost every morning. Our language arts, our social studies, and our science are the same. And one thing that I really like seeing in my kids is it's connecting everything, and so sometimes when they read something, they think about, oh, I learned this in science, or I heard about this, and we've talked about this event in social studies. So it kind of gives a whole round education where things are connecting every day. So I'm kind of excited for what we're bringing to our kids.
Ryan?
Yes, ma'am.
This is Gloria. This is Gloria. I wanted to find out, do we have to go six years with this, or can we cut that in half to three? Because when you look at six years, like LaShawna was saying, if it does not work effectively, then we have six years that we have to put up with something that is not good for our students. And like Julie says, you know, it's all about the students, we want to do what's best for our students, and we wouldn't want to drag this on for six years. So is there any way you can cut that in half for three years?
Yeah, so we looked at a variety of options with that. There's no legal standard or statutory reason why we would have to adopt six years. All of that being said, the specific package that was negotiated, six years triggers a few specific cost savings for us as well. I know, so when you look at the combination of the products that were selected by the various different quotes that are in that package, you know, when you go six years, you get X, I think, I don't want to quote the right number, I believe it's 15%, but six years gives you 20% off the price, and then additionally, you get some additional savings for it. So I think on some level, what you're looking at is, would you be willing to spend 85% of the overall cost for three years, or 100% of the cost for six years, when you're looking at that contract? So I won't, there's, I won't say that there's zero risk in any six-year cycle. That being said, I think we're also trying to figure out the best way to maximize the contract and the funds. The other thing that I think, in generally speaking, we, we actually delayed our reading adoption, and we're adopting one year past what most of us around us have, which that gave us the great value of doing those reference checks with neighbor and sister districts for that, meaning that it's, it feels safe, especially when every single school district in Marion County is on a six-year adoption of Amplify. You know, I don't feel like we're in an island, I don't feel like we're positioning ourselves in a place where we couldn't pivot because of some termination language. And I also think in a way, with all the funding conversations we're having, we have to maximize that dollar, and the six-year plan, at least in my opinion, in my recommendation, is the best way, best way to get not only the best curriculum, but the best value.
I understand what you're saying, but, you know, when you think about it, you know, I know we all try to save a dollar, and that's important, because, you know, we're struggling in education. But at the same time, we don't want to jeopardize the success of our students. It would be good to get those additional savings, however, if it, if you take a look, I would rather lose the additional savings than to lose our students. Because, you know, if it does not work, then we're stuck for six years, and can you imagine how long that is for our students, what grades they'll start in from K to six? And for something that is not working, and we're just going through the motions because we paid for it? I think that it's important for us to take a look at that. It's a risk, yes, but I'd rather risk three years than to risk six. If it works in three years, great, you know, then we made a great choice. But if it don't work, then at least we won't lose out on three additional years of our children. So, you know, I don't want to throw our children's success away for a discount.
I want to say, there, there is a termination clause, which is important to remember, and then personally, one of the things that, to me, is the most important, is considering our transancy rate, the fact that every district in Marion County uses it means that our students transfer in, they're not changing reading curriculum, they're going to be somewhere right around the same place, they're going to be able to pick up what they were doing at their old school, which will hopefully look very similar, if not exactly where they are at their new school, that to me is a huge plus, and I'm very grateful for that.
Oh, one last thing. You know, the concern now is our children academically being able to read and be able to, you know, do well academically, and things like that. I understand what you're saying about being able to transfer from one school to another, but Ryan, I want to ask you this. In the past, did we have a six-year adoption of our, our materials? And if so, we're at the point now where we're trying to struggle to make sure that our children do better, because, you know, they didn't, they weren't as successful as we wanted them to be. So we are here at the table trying to find out, what else can we do to help our children do better, because they're not achieving as high as we would like them to achieve. So if we had a six-year adoption before, then that may contribute to why our students were not doing well, because it may not have been working, and they were tied into that six year. I don't want that to happen, because, you know, if we repeat ourselves, then how are we going to help our children to improve?
Yeah, I would just say that under previous Indiana statute and common practice, almost identical practice for every Indiana school, is all curriculum adoptions are six years. That, that's for all content areas, until recently, when the TBR laws changed, every single TBR, everything, everything looks that way. I don't associate any of our academic struggles to a six-year adoption, specifically, or a specific curriculum specifically. Again, if you ask me to highlight my confidence in six years, it's more about the implementation support and the professional development, rather than the curriculum itself for that. Again, in my opinion, Amplify's a clear first, one, A, B, and C choice. And I think the only other thing that I would ask you to consider is that. And I think the only other thing that I would ask you to consider is that if we want to be responsive to teachers, changing curriculum every three years is a nightmare, just because it takes you a while. It takes a good two years just to figure out ultimately how the best utilize the product. And if you do that every three years, every two years, you're really putting them in a very difficult situation to try to be successful.
Right, and I, for clarity, I understand the six years, and very versed on that. My question was just simply, if this program is not successful for our students, what is, I didn't see a specific penalty amount, and maybe I overlooked that, so that's what I was asking, like...
Yeah, there's not a penalty per se, it just has to mean...
Termination, right. Like, I didn't see a specific percentage of a termination, so that's why I was asking that question.
Fair, I understand.
Yeah, I understand it's a termination clause, I just didn't see what that would be.
Like if there was like a 20% penalty or something like that?
Yes, yes. Thank you.
I want to thank everyone for their comments. Obviously, particularly ELA adoptions are a big deal. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Julie made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Terry seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, let me, let me just say a couple things here. First off, I don't think, this is my, my thought on that, three years is not a, to me, three years, I put my voice carry well enough.
Not for online.
Okay. Yeah, I don't think, this, this program is not a quick fix kind of a thing. Three, three, three years is not, is not, is not enough. I think it's going to be a long-term sort of a thing. Six years, I didn't have a problem with that, and I think that's an appropriate amount of time. Process commercial here. Did you turn the heat off in this place?
Yes.
I don't know.
To give us a quick bolt?
I'm hot right now, what are you talking about?
Well, you could come here because it is freezing.
Uh, anyway. Thought I'd liven up a little bit. I got a question, though, in reference to these surveys, and I hate to go back all the way back there, but that's staying in my mind right now, and I'm going to... You said 100% of the teachers participated in the survey.
I don't think I s...
Yeah, I held on to that. You said 100% of the teachers participated in the survey that we had, and I couldn't let go of that, unless I didn't understand.
Maybe, I think you said that. So, but maybe if he did, maybe he meant that all the teachers that were...
Yeah, if I said that, I misspoke. 100% of teachers not participating in the survey.
Well, okay, that's what I needed to know, because I didn't, I wasn't buying it. That's what I mean, so I want to get back to that.
Hey, how about this, Mr. Dorsey, 100% of teachers had the availability to take the survey.
Okay. So how many took it?
The number's in the 60s, I want to say 68. I can get you the exact number for sure.
That sounds about right, yeah. Yeah, okay, yeah, that was, I stayed on that, and maybe I've just, the longer I thought about it, the worse it got.
Fair enough.
And so I asked, so I then blurted it out at this point. But, yeah, I wasn't buying 100%. Okay, good. 60%, you say? And you could only come up with three testimonies in each category for parents and also teachers?
I mean...
Talk to me. Let him answer.
I mean, yeah, there's more, I can, if you guys want more information of the testimonies, I can certainly provide that. Again, those are just supposed to be snapshots of some of the testimonies that we pulled out.
Okay. I just thought you have, I just thought that testimonies would be a little bit more powerful than just what I saw here. Okay, that's, that's all I had.
Excellent, any other discussion?
Can I, can I say one last thing? Ryan, in the event that there's a problem with this material, do we have a backup plan?
A backup curriculum, a backup...
A backup plan in the event we start having difficulty with students being successful with this. I know that you said there's a whole lot to be able to get out of it. So do we have a backup plan on what we can do to accommodate our students if it's not as effective as we planned it to be?
Hey Gloria, this is Dr. Hanson. You know, the team did an amazing job of, you know, I think the pilots are a proof point that this is a great curriculum. We're hearing that from our teachers, we're hearing that from our students. We teach the Indiana academic standards. We're using this as a resource to teach the Indiana academic standards. So I understand the concern. We've seen great growth from our I READ scores, based on the framework that we put in place on the science of reading. That's not going to change. CKLA follows that model. Again, you know, we're not going to want to put our students or our teachers in any sort of way that they're not going to be successful. We are taking your concerns tonight. We will, as you heard through the professional development that's being planned, the investment that's being made on the implementation coach, it's a significant investment. So we hear your concerns, and if we feel that we're going down a path that is not going to lead us to success, we will reevaluate.
Thank you so much for that clarification.
Okay, and with that, Mr. Secretary, if you could call a vote.
Ms. Gloria?
Yes.
We will start with you.
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yeah.
Ms. Julie?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mrs. How?
Yes.
That would be a yes for myself, Madam President.
Yes.
And that vote passes.
Excellent, thank you so much for your time this evening, Ryan, and now you can get out of the hot seat and freeze like the rest of us.
Thank you, guys.
We're going to move on to Resolution 636.25, reaffirming the district's commitment to maintaining a safe and supportive learning environment for all students regardless of immigration status. All board members were emailed a copy of this to review. I would like to say that this was liberally, I don't want to use the word stolen, but that's a pretty accurate term, from Washington Township and Fort Wayne Community Schools, and so I would like to thank them for their inputs. Can I entertain a motion?
So moved.
I was Shawna Triplett's second.
Thank you, so I've got Terry making the motion and LaShawna seconding. Is there any discussion?
I think you picked the great parts of both of those, and I really like this. I really like this.
It's borrowed practice, borrowed best practices, that's what we did. Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing and saying none, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Gloria?
Yes.
Mr. Howard? Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Ms. Julie, I'm sorry.
Yes.
That would be a yes for myself and Madam President.
Ms. Triplett.
Ms. Triplett, how you doing?
Yes.
It's cold, we're all forgetting what we're supposed to be doing, and I'm also a yes.
All right, and that motion passes also.
So as a moment of personal privilege, thank you so much. I truly appreciate the board's support for that and for all of our students. And with that, Mr. Simkins, you are the last one. Make us warm.
I feel like a relief pitcher late in the game coming out of the bullpen. Let's see. Here we go. President Burke, Dr. Hanson, members of the board. This time last year, last February, I brought before you, for your approval, a similar action item. This is having to do with the Early Literacy Achievement Grant stipends and our rationale for distributing those stipends. If you recall, the DOE Early Literacy Achievement Grant was established by House Enrolled Act 1001-2023 to reward schools and teachers for improving students' foundational reading school skills, as evidenced by I READ III. Just like last year, this is a great opportunity to spotlight the good work that's being done in our schools with respect to vastly improved I READ III results. And so therefore, again, these funds will be dispersed to the following groups of schools that you see there, like last year, based on levels of I READ III achievement, growth, and then also accounting for additional factors related primarily to student complexity. So for, for this grant purposes, a base stipend amount will be provided to all K3 teachers, instructional coaches, reading interventionists, special education teachers, and ML teachers that have a responsibility for delivering literacy and reading instruction to kindergarten through grade three students for the 2023-24 school year. So all this is staff for last year. And so, based on the groupings of the schools that you see there, Group One, those staff that I just named would be, in Group One, would receive the base stipend. Those staff in Group Two would receive 25% more than the base stipend. Those you see in the buildings enlisted in Group Three would receive 50% more of the stipend. So I'm in the process right now of working with our payroll administrator every day, reviewing the data. Last year, we were kind of building the proverbial airplane while flying it. This year, we're a little bit more wise as to how it all works and just collecting the data, and now we're going through it and making sure we're prepared to do these, these stipends. These stipends will be provided no later than March 21st. I'm, I'm well aware that the I READ III testing window is fast approaching, and so I'm going to work diligently with our payroll to try and get these out as soon as possible, but ultimately no later than before spring break. Also, just like last year, with other district funds, we are also providing stipends to other identified school personnel in our K4 buildings. So, for instance, certified staff, school personnel, certified personnel on a teacher contract, counselors, related arts teachers, grade four teachers, they will, again, get a $500 stipend. Also, various identified support staff in the K4 buildings, you know, IAs, media assistants, front office, and family engagements, liaisons, and the like, will get a $250 stipend. So, again, the usual stipulations apply. One has to be actively employed when we're ready to deposit those stipends. We usually do it off Friday, so it's very clear what stipend you're getting, you can clearly see it. They're subject to taxation, it's a one-time stipend, they're not bargainable, et cetera, et cetera. So that's, that's really essentially how, how it works, and like I said, we're, we're working diligently to get everything together, to get it out as soon as possible. We had about double the funding from last year, so I can tell you preliminarily, I don't want to say what it is now, but looking today for the first time, the stipends are very healthy. There should be some happy, happy teachers with that, so I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Excellent, can we have a motion to approve the stipends?
So moved.
I was Shawna Triplett's second. Give it to Ms. Gloria.
Okay, so I've got Julie making the motion and Gloria seconding it. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing and seeing none, Mr. Secretary for the last time.
Ms. Gloria?
Yes.
Mr. Howard? Ms. Julie?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Ms. LaShawna?
Yes.
And that would be a yes for myself, Madam President?
Yes.
And that motion passes also.
Excellent, that passes, thank you so much. Gives yourself a good month to get all that in place. We have no discussion items, which kind of scares me, I'm not going to lie, but we're going to move on to closing comments with the polite reminder that it started snowing half an hour ago. Mr. Humphrey?
Well, thank you, everyone that's attended, and we are off to a good start, and thank our wonderful student counselor, as always, she's always the, the highlight, she always brings the joy to us to let us see that what we're producing and the quality that we have and the knowledge she presents on us, and thank everyone that came about, our outstanding wrestlers, our outstanding ladies of football, this, this now pioneering new ways for all the young women in the state of Indiana, and thank each of you that hung in there with us and continue the joys and the blessings we can bring upon our community. Thank you.
Ms. Triplett?
Kevin usually doesn't have that many words, so I'll just ditto him tonight, be safe.
Terry?
Welcome again, Mr. Sullivan. Very excited for our girls' opportunity in sports. And one of the big things that I was excited about is some of the trips that our students are going to go visit some HBCUs and get some real-life experiences. With that said, everyone, have a great night, we'll see you next month.
Gloria?
I am so excited about what we're doing in Warren, and the only thing I have to say is, go Warren!
Thank you, Gloria, Howard?
Let me say that Julie, you gave a great presentation. The legislative thing was really, really good, and it was very informative and very helpful. I just want to make sure you knew that and you heard that. Are you feeling better now? Nice and warm, or are you cooled down or something? Great, great presentation, that was good, I liked that. I think it's going to get a good program, I see big things out of that.
Mic drop?
He's sleeping.
I'm done.
He's sleeping.
Yeah, I dropped the mic, that's called dropping the mic.
Julie?
Okay, I'm going to throw one more legislative thing in there real quick, because when we were just doing the money for the teachers, I want to say there's also a bill floating around out there where they want to get rid of the tag grants, and they want to give teachers bigger amounts, but not all teachers or not a, not all highly effective and effective teachers. They want to give like $10,000 to some, or $5,000 to some, but we are expected to put that on as a base on their salary. That's going to be a bit difficult, adding that on as a base, considering what's going on financially with the revenue. And it also doesn't award our teachers, it's just small numbers, whereas now we're able to award a lot of teachers. So we need to keep that in mind and think about that also, so. I'm done.
If I may, can I also have a closing statement, President Burke?
Go for it.
As you all have graciously, oh, it's on, I'm sorry, I'm probably, it's not really close. You've all given me a lot of kind notes, and I just would like to give one back. It's one that holds a very deep closeness with me. I just want to say thank you a lot, especially to everyone who spoke on the legislation that's happening. As I am currently, of course, coming of age and going into society out on my own, this is a world that I'm going to have to open my eyes up to, and this is the world that I'm going to have to live in. And growing up, there are a lot of people that will try to deter not only myself, but also my peers, because of our age or our race, our ethnicities, things of that nature, all of our differences. And they will try to deter us from paying attention to what is going on around us, but I really appreciate the transparency that you all have, not only because these are some of my peers that these legislations will affect, but also because there are people in my family who these things will affect. And so seeing how transparent and honest and seeing how strong-willed you all are to stand up against these things that can affect our community... to stand up against, um, these things that can affect our community negatively, it truly warms my heart. And I am glad to know that we have placed very strong-willed and, um, well-minded people in charge of our community and our township and our board. Thank you.
First of all, thank you so much, Tanisha. Second of all, now I have to speak, so maybe thank you a little less. That being said, um, really quickly, it is Black History Month. It is important that we celebrate Black History Month. And so for like one last callback to the Super Bowl, Kendrick Lamar performing in the halftime show was absolutely amazing. He is an African-American Pulitzer Prize in music winner, which is the only Pulitzer Prize for non-instrumental music in music. And that is something to be upheld and celebrated and his performance should have reminded us all of that. Um, and so I was just really great to see it and I made everyone come in because I had lost everyone in my family because the game was so exciting. So we all celebrated that together. Um, and then second of all, as the, we'll go with daughter of an immigrant with status issues, um, I'm very, very grateful to the board for passing what they passed tonight, the resolution that we passed, um, protecting our students. We are their safe place, school needs to be that safe place. Thank you so much for your time and the meeting is adjourned.